Good evening. I am Trinise Riggs, the Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:02 on the 28th day of February 2023. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex School Board Room is Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
And Ms. Brown is caught in traffic and has been all day off and on, so hopefully she'll make it back, and if she doesn't, it'll be okay.
President of the line?
Yes, it does. Okay, so let's move forward. We're going to start with our moment of silence, and it'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, enjoy me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, to the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, one ground, and the visible liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This evening, the school board has the pleasure of recognizing Division teachers This year, the school division is proudly adding nine additional teacher board certified teachers to the group of teachers who have earned this stellar certification. Including these nine, the division now has 149 teachers that hold this distinction, which is the fourth highest in Virginia. I ask you to please hold any applause until we are done with the recognition, since we will be highlighting the honors of each recipient after their name is read. Let's welcome the division's most recent honorees. Jessica Dennis, kindergarten teacher, Linkhorn Park Elementary, received National Board Certification in the area of Early and Middle Childhood Reading Language Arts. Matthew Denver, English teacher, Tallwood High School, received National Board Certification in the area of Adolescence and Young Adulthood English Language Arts. Lindsay Eskins, band instructor, Independence Middle School, received National Board Certification in the area of Adolescence and Young Adulthood and Science. Zachary Catwinkle, drama teacher, First Colonial High School, received National Board Certification in the area of Adolescence and Young Adulthood English Language Arts. Claire Love, second grade teacher, Christopher Farms Elementary School, received National Board Certification in the area of Early Childhood through Young Adulthood Library Media. Suzanne Forster-Sackle, fourth grade teacher, Arrowhead Elementary School, received National Board Certification in the area of Middle Childhood Generalist. Michelle Robusto-DiAtli, English teacher, Kellum High School, received National Board Certification in the area of Adolescence and Young Adulthood English Language Arts. Heidi Jaeger, gifted teacher, Kemsvill Middle School, received National Board Certification in the area of Early Childhood through Young Adulthood Exceptional Needs Specialist Gifted and Talented. And Kelly Zajak, fifth grade teacher, Christopher Farms Elementary School, received National Board Certification in the area of Early and Middle Childhood Literacy Reading Language Arts. According to the National Board Professional Teaching Standards, this certification is the most respected professional certification available in K-12 education. Created by teachers for teachers, National Board Certification is a voluntary certification system based on high and rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. It takes anywhere from three to five years to complete. Candidates are required to demonstrate their mastery of content knowledge, provide a portfolio demonstrating how they differentiate instruction based on student needs, provide videos of their teaching in action, and submit a portfolio demonstrating evidence that they are effective and reflective practitioners. Congratulations, teachers. We are really, really proud of you. Really proud of you. And Madam Chair, this concludes our school board recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Melnick.
I know half those people.
So we're going to go to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Franklin? Do I have a second? Ms. Martin? All in, um, to, is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Superintendent's report. Dr. Spence, we look forward to your report.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Here's just a few items of interest for you and our families to know this evening. First, I'm sure and hopeful that you've received some nice feedback from students, staff, and families during February's School Board Appreciation Month. You are among the 850 school board members here in Virginia who help our children have the best future possible. I join our community in appreciating your work, which I know involves many late hours attending meetings, looking at reports, and speaking with parents and students. You may not always get the compliments you deserve, but the hope, love, and effort you invest in our students is inspiring, so thank you for all you do, and we do hope you appreciate the tokens of appreciation from our students and staff you received earlier this evening. Next, I'd like to talk about the Plaza Middle School Day of Service. Students at Plaza Middle School recently participated in a day of service that stretched across Virginia Beach and beyond. As a part of Plaza's work as an IB World School, Academy Civic Students decided where and how they would like to serve the community, and then they pitched those ideas to a group of judges. The winning ideas turned into action on January 31st, when sixth and seventh graders performed service projects both at the school, and eighth graders volunteered at several locations across the city. Students made dog toys for the SPCA and carried out service projects at the Brock Environmental Center, Operation Smile, the Cape Henry Lighthouse, and several of our schools. Our students give back to the community every day here in Virginia Beach, and it was especially great to see Plaza Middle School have a positive impact during its day of service. Hopefully, you saw the local news coverage of our Environmental Studies Program students. Recently, an endangered white right whale washed ashore within walking distance of their classroom at the Chesapeake Bay Foundation's Brock Environmental Center. An environmental studies coordinator, Chris Freeman, told a local television reporter, "We'd like to think of this as an extension of our classroom. Any opportunity that can create hands-on, non-passive learning is important for students to understand what's going on in the world around us." When Mr. Freeman and his students went out to see the whale, they found Senior Tiffany Baylor there, working as a part of her internship with the Virginia Aquarium. Tiffany's work with the Stranding Response Team is the kind of real-world learning that helps our students be future-ready. At the site of the stranded whale, students talked with marine police, Virginia Aquarium specialists, and NOAA officials. They watched an acropsy and learned how experts diagnose the cause of death. It was very powerful to see our students engaged with this significant event in our Now I want to tell you about a new thing that's happening in our districts, All District Reads. This year, all 4,768 of our fifth-grade students are reading the same book in March as part of this new literacy initiative we're participating in called All District Reads. Each student is getting a copy, their own copy, of El Rey Jakes's Magic by Sally Warner. Their teachers are going to be encouraging them to read it aloud with their parents, siblings, and neighbors, and even their pets, to get the whole community excited. El Rey's antics will be part of many fun reading discussions taking place during National Reading Month, and I was able to join some local celebrities in reading different chapters of the book for a video we're making available to our families. With help from our community partners, we hope to expand the program next year to all students, kindergarten through fifth grade. And finally, Happy Public Schools Week. This week, we're celebrating public schools and the dedicated educators and professionals who support students in so many ways. Division-wide, we're encouraging students and families to share their school success stories on social media and thank their teachers and their principals. This week is a great reminder of the vital role public schools play in helping to educate nine of every 10 students in the United States. Public Schools Week honors the over 51 million students, 3.2 million teachers, and even more specialists, administrators, and support staff working in our public schools across this great country. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. The approval of the meeting minutes, there are two sets of minutes for approval tonight, and we will begin first with the February 7th, 2023 Special School Board Meeting. Are there any modifications to the February 7th, 2023 Special School Board Meeting Minutes as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the February 7th, 2023 Minutes as presented. Ms. Anderson, and do I have a second? Mr. Culpepper? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the February 7th, 2023 Minutes as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. For the February 14th, 2023 Regular School Board Meeting, are there any modifications to the February 14th, 2023 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the February 14th, 2023 Minutes as presented. Do I have a motion? Ms. Martin, and do I have a second? Ms. Manning? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the February 14th, 2023 Minutes as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. We are now at our public comments session, section of our agenda, which will last until 8:00 PM. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who've signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. Speakers are responsible for being in the school board room, auditorium, or online when they are called to speak. If a speaker is not present when called to speak, or is not online, or unable to unmute when called to speak, the school board, at its sole discretion, may allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comment session. The school board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first student speakers will be Emily Labarre, Ella Stanton, and Alana Spencer.
If I had a nickel for every school board speaker that got hit by a car in the last month, I would have two nickels. And while that might not sound like a lot, it's still a little ridiculous. My name is Emily Labarre, and I'm the president of First Colonial High School's Gender Sexuality Alliance. Back in September, I didn't come here because I wanted recognition. I didn't come here because I thought I would have 30 speakers speaking alongside me. I came here because I didn't see another option. My friends are in danger, so I must help them. Injustice and bigotry threaten my classmates, so I must do what I can to stop it. We've outlined legal precedents and law clearly showing the shaky ground that these policies stand on. We've outlined the dangers these policies pose to victims of abuse and at-risk transgender students. These policies don't match the culture of Virginia Beach. They don't match the broad consensus between our parents and students and teachers. There are 1,000 reasons why these model policies will harm our student body, reasons we've spoken on for the last five months. So what more is there to say? Why do we keep coming even after spending hours here, even after we get hit by a car, even after months upon months of consistent attendance? I can't give you an answer on behalf of my peers, but I can tell you mine. I am here because I have faith. I believe so strongly that you will do the right thing. I believe so strongly in your love for your students. But I also believe that love alone will not protect us. Love and faith alone are not enough. Love and faith are the path to a better society and a better world, but action is the strong hands and the strong hearts that creates that path. It takes courage to act, to do what is right regardless of whether it's easy or convenient.
30 seconds.
It isn't easy to come up and speak here. It isn't easy to have grown adults speak against us and compare us to animals. It isn't easy to know that our classmates, our peers, our friends are seen as lesser, worthy of lesser protections, worthy of lesser love. It isn't easy to come up to this podium and speak, but I do it because it is what must be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily Labarre.
Our next speaker is Ella Stanton, then Alana Spencer, then Andrea Palamino-Hayo.
Welcome.
Thank you. Often at these school board meetings, the issue of parents' rights is brought up in defense of the proposed model policies on transgender students. The argument is made that students' parents have the right to be informed of their child's behavior, but the fact is, this is not an issue of parent or student rights. Transgender students having a community at school where their identity is respected and allowed is a matter of human rights, not parents. One of the founding principles of the United States is that every citizen is entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. This sentiment is also listed in the United Nations List of 30 Basic Human Rights as the right to life, liberty, and the security of person. To deny transgender students a community where they can safely be themselves violates their liberty and basic rights as humans. Taking away a vital source of acceptance and liberty for transgender students risks the loss of life. In the study, suicide and suicidal behavior among transgender persons shows that mental health of the transgender community is affected internationally, stating that 41% of American transgender persons attempt suicide, over 50% in India, and 48% in England. The study even mentions our state, saying transgender persons are at higher risk of suicidal ideation and suicide attempts in Virginia. The reason for these rates are very simple: rejection and lack of support from the families and society impact mental health. 62% of transgender respondents to the study say that they either have problems with family members or are completely cut off from them. Familial rejection and hatred is a driving factor in the mental health crisis for transgender teens. I'm not saying that parents wanting to be informed about their children are hateful, but the fact is that for many transgender students, their home is the farthest thing from safety. Forcing schools to out their students will have devastating effects on transgender youth, and denying them the liberty to be themselves will continue to exacerbate the mental health crisis. There are no positives to this policy. If enacted, it will only serve to endanger the youth at our schools. As previously mentioned, Virginia is already a state where trans students are high at risk.
30 seconds.
Over the last month, you've heard proof of that from students, proof of the hate trans students live through, proof of the threat this policy would not going forward. It would strip away their safety, their community, and their well-being. Protect the transgender students in our school system, because this isn't a matter of parent or student's rights, it's a matter of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alana Spencer, then Andrea Palamino-Hayo, and then Madison Alana Spencer?
Good evening, school board members. We've interviewed four teachers across BBCPS who have chosen to keep their identities anonymous. Here are some of the responses, word for word. In my classroom, it doesn't matter which gender you identify as, what name you choose to use, what color your skin is, or what your appearance is. Everyone is human being that is treated equally and fairly. I try my hardest not to make anyone feel uncomfortable just because they don't fit into the normal box society has created. Another teacher states, "It is an impossible task to play both sides of this, what the law requires and what the student needs." It is perfectly normal for students not to want to tell their parents right away. This is often because they are afraid of repercussions at home, which can span anywhere from verbal abuse, ridicule, and being threatened with conversion therapy, to physical violence, to being kicked out of their home. However, sometimes it is because they are simply not entirely sure yet and don't want to upset anyone at home until they have a tighter grip on their identity. Some students will experiment with different gender identities at school only to realize that it isn't their right fit for them. Imagine if we were forced to call home and disrupt a child's home life for that. Another teacher told us that this dead naming and misgendering would cast a dark cloud over the teacher-student relationship. I also believe that it will negatively impact our trans students' attendance and shatter their motivation. If I am not allowed to call someone by their chosen name, it dehumanizes them. If I am forced to rat a student out to their parents, it alienates them. If I am told I have to refuse participation in an activity because of a teacher's, because of a student's legal gender, it segregates them. All of these would have profound impacts on teacher-student relationships. These policies will cause more work and stress to me as a teacher. I will be worried about my students more, and I will be focusing on how my interactions with them may be harmed due to these required policies. Transgender students are no different than other students. No one can attest to this more than the people who teach them. Every transgender student I have ever taught has been an asset to our school. They have all been kind, hardworking, and dedicated to their education. Those that have now graduated have gone on to do great things. I can also attest to the fact that our transgender students thrive in an environment where they can be themselves without fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Madison Ostraya, then Alexa Hernandez, then Natalie Gonzalez. Madison Ostraya? Alexa Hernandez?
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Alexia Hernandez. I am a senior at First Colonial High School, and I'm here to talk today about the transgender student model policies. It is not under a school's or the government's purview to impose a set of particular ideological beliefs on all students. This is a direct quote from the office of Governor Glenn, of Governor Glenn Youngkin, a strong proponent of the argument of parental rights. He cites parental rights as being based in the constitutional principle for a parent to make key decisions about their kid's education. He says his policy is meant to, quote, "uphold the dignity and respect of all public school students," end quote. I believe that the guise of parental, of parental rights is being used to hide the true fact that these policies are meant to dress and franchise trans people, to impose an ideological belief that trans people are wrong, that being trans is wrong. It is clear that if it were a parental rights issue, the many thousands of parents in this state and in this city would have voiced their staunch opposition to the passing of the Virginia Human Rights Act, which supports the very opposite of these policies. The law says that discrimination on the basis of gender identity by government institution is illegal, and executive action cannot change that. If the governor and this city would like to make sure that there is dignity and respect, then let us stop lying to ourselves. Parents are not educational experts. The teachers that dedicate their lives to educating our children, and the experts who studied for decades the psychosocial development of adolescents, all point to the same conclusion. A respectful, effective school environment is one that supports the student, their identity, and their experiences. Let us pretend for a minute that this is actually about the parents' rights to control their children's education and censor their experiences. When have we ever allowed parents to do this in the past? It is inappropriate to suggest that a high school student's parents knows more about what they should be exposed to than that of a curriculum writer or a school psychologist. In addition, let us remember that, for the most part, we are talking about young adults here, responsible high school students who are months away from adulthood and simply want to be treated as such. The pronouns, the preferred names, bathrooms, parental rights, these are all political buzzwords meant to rouse us into taking extreme positions despite the fact that the real world does not care. In the real world, if you give someone a name, they use it. They don't care about your life story or care to check your birth certificate to see if you're lying. They don't care to confirm your sex before deciding to take a side. Though I don't actually believe that this is about parental rights, if we pretend for a second that it is, this is not a key or life-changing, complex decision about a child's education. It is a courtesy extended to a student to make them more comfortable in their learning environment. If we intend to try not to impose ideological beliefs onto students and also dignify them, is it so difficult to consider that they know how they want to be respected? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natalie Gonzalez, then Icarus Landacker, then Bethany Wilmouth.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Gonzalez, and I am a cisgender student. Though I am cisgender, I, as well as many of my peers, attend these meetings to support our transgender friends who are not able to speak themselves. We attend these meetings because we love our friends. They say that shared joy is double joy, and shared sorrow is halved sorrow. Shared joy is going to my friend's house and watching their favorite videos with them for hours on end and getting distracted from our homework to share our love for something. Shared joy is seeing my friend's face light up when I bought them jewelry they liked for Christmas, and watching them come out of the bathroom after putting it on, their voice in a higher pitch, full of excitement and gratitude. Halved sorrow is spending hours upon hours writing to them about my own struggles at home. Halved sorrow is crying together, calling them over to my house and crying on their shoulder, or telling them it was going to be okay, and listening to them cry over the phone. Halved sorrow is knowing that we weren't alone, that someone out there cared for us and could accept us for who we were. I love my friend, and it breaks my heart to know their parents didn't feel the same way. It breaks my heart to know their parents could not accept that their child was trans and were unwilling to accept them for who they were. I watched as their mental health spiraled, and I watched as somebody so smart, so hardworking, so creative, and earnest, and full of potential felt as though their life meant nothing. When they went home, they faced constant misgendering and dead naming from their family, constantly being told that who they really were was less important than who everybody else wanted them to be. For my friend, one of the few places they felt safe was the classroom, where their teachers and peers respected them and called them by the right name and the right pronouns. It only takes a moment to call someone by their chosen name, but the impact it has on them is unfathomable. It is something you can only truly begin to understand when you watch it happen before your eyes. Many believe we oppose this policy because we seek to create a divide between parents and their children, or because we do not respect our own parents. This couldn't be further from the truth. We oppose this policy because we want to protect our classmates. We oppose this policy because it would drive a wedge between students and their families. Calling another by their chosen name can save a life, while a teacher calling a parent to out a student can end one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Icarus Landacker, then Bethany Wilmouth, then Liv Jorgensen.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. When I sat down to write this, I was exhausted. I had woken up and the first thing I had to do was deadname myself to a parent who was picking up my brother's friends. On top of that, I had spent the prior day doing over six hours of homework, and I was preparing to do the same thing once more. I am exhausted. I've spent the past five months attending these meetings like all my friends here. I have been writing speeches, talking to students, and researching late into the night, searching for that one statistic that would change perspectives and show just how pressing this issue is. And to top it all off, I got hit by a car yesterday while on my bike. It was just a minor accident where both parties were okay, but I was shaken. I wanted nothing more than to go to bed as soon as I got home, but I didn't. I stayed up. I stayed up to write, to research, and to finish this speech. I am exhausted. We all are exhausted. And yet, we are still here. Despite all the accidents, we are still here. I'm sure some of you even recognize some of us either by name or face. What does that tell you? Two meetings ago, an individual spoke out expressing concerns that our group did not represent BBCPS as a whole. They claimed we mostly represented First Colonial despite the fact that many of us are from other schools, including me. Additionally, although the FC students began this and read many of the testimonies, these testimonies are from students across the district. Those testimonies include students from Kellum High School, Princess Anne High School, Landstown, First Colonial, Ocean Lakes, Green Run, Tallwood, the list goes on. The reason why so many students attending these meetings are from FC is not because FC is the only school that cares, but because they are some of the few students who are able to speak up. Let me take you back to September of last year, 2022. As many of you may remember, there were walkouts against this policy across the state. One of the schools that participated in this was my school, Princess Anne. In fact, it was estimated that we had around 150 students participate, yet I was the only Princess Anne student to show up to these meetings afterwards. Today, I am one of two.
Thirty seconds.
The reason why these numbers are so low is not because other students don't agree or care, but because these students cannot speak without putting themselves in risk. Their voices are being silenced, and they will continue to be silenced until the school board decides to do something. We are exhausted, but we are determined, because if there is anything this district has taught us, it is to use our voices. Speak up, because others will answer. Now follow your teach-
And that is time.
...and speak up.
Our next speaker is Bethany Wilmouth, then Liv Jorgensen, then Miranda White.
Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Bethany Wilmouth. I'm currently a freshman attending Salem High School, and I'm here to speak against the anti-transgender policies being considered. The negative outcomes resulting from these policies are one that the state has not regarded since student choice and expression are of minor significance to them. The school system should be uplifting the freedom of expression in schools. This includes the freedom of gender expression. Some may argue that the concern of parents knowing what's going on in their child's life is a valid one, and I would agree with that notion. However, when you have reports like the one done by the American Academy of Pediatrics divulging that 73% of transgender students reported psychological abuse, 39% reported physical abuse, and 19% reported sexual abuse, it becomes necessary to reflect on the consequences these policies may have. Coming out is a profound part of not only transgender students' lives, but the lives of LGBT students as a whole. No student deserves to be forced out of their comfort zone like that, especially when they've expressed that it could put them in immediate danger. Some also argue that blindly accepting requests to go by a different name can be confusing and premature. However, there are no legal or permanent changes manifested when students' requests to go by different pronouns or names during their developmental years. We should all be promoting self-discovery and self-love during the time that our children are growing into themselves, regardless of if that growth may be one that we didn't expect. The current transgender policies have given transgender students a much more supportive and loving environment that they may not be experiencing at home. Throughout middle school, I watched my classmates grow into people they were more comfortable with. Seeing that change and watching that change be embraced was a truly beautiful experience. No matter how hard you try, you cannot force anybody to live life as somebody they are not. Transgender people have been and will continue to be around regardless of what bills are in place. And regardless of the gender identity of a child, they're still just that, a child. If children are top priority, then we cannot pick and choose. I urge everybody listening, whether you're on the school board or in the crowd, to fight against the introduced model policies regarding transgender youth. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liv Jorgensen, then Miranda White, then Alexa Shoemaker. Liv Jorgensen?
Welcome.
Hi, Liv Jorgensen's not here tonight, but I'm Miranda White.
Good evening. I'm a junior at First Colonial High School in the Legal Studies Academy, and I'm here to talk to you about our school counselors. My outcome for the day is often determined by one factor, how I wake up in the morning. The saying, "Woke up on the wrong side of the bed," couldn't apply more to me. It's like an emotional roll of the dice. You never know what you're gonna get. I'd love if every day was positive, but that isn't always the case. The bottom line is, I don't know. I don't know what's gonna come next. So some days, I just need a little bit more support. Living in such an unpredictable state calls for dependable measures of support. For example, my high school guidance counselor. I spend so much of my time away from my own home that the only person I can rely on to safely process during the day is my school counselor. She's willing to drop anything she is doing in order to speak for me, and for that, I am eternally grateful. Last year was probably the worst time in my life. I was extremely vulnerable and not practicing safe habits. I would sit in class when suddenly a wave of bitter emotions would decide to wash over me. My thoughts would start to swirl, and I would suddenly become the center of an EF5 tornado, thoughts swirling around me at 100 miles per hour. I didn't feel that I was okay in my own skin. When I visited the counseling office, my counselor, Mrs. Tomeo, sat me down and allowed me to process with her without judgment. Even when I was unable to put into words how I felt, she was able to change the topic and distract me from my internal turmoil. Ultimately, she brought me down from a state of panic, and if she was not there for me in my time of need, I'm not sure what I would be today. Like the flip of a light switch, my mood can change from good to worse. I need to have a healthy way to process my emotions during school. My school counselor has always and will continue to always be there during my time of need. If she were to disappear from my life, my outlook for the future would be much more grim. Do not take this precious resource available to students for granted. Schools must have their counselors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alexa Shoemaker, then Katie Allen, then Dylan Ricks.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Alexia Shoemaker, and I'm a sophomore at First Colonial High School. My father is in the military, and we've moved many times over the course of my brother and I's lives. We are now coming up on the second year of our seventh move this May. Since I've moved so many times, I've been surrounded by many different communities and lifestyles, and although FC is one of the best schools I have attended, there are still problems that need to be addressed. My brother, a recent graduate of FC, had influenced me to join FC's theater program my freshman year. Both of our experiences, we were welcomed into a crowd of people that would soon turn into a wondrous group of accepting and caring friends. With the exception of some extracurriculars, First Colonial's school environment can be unpleasant, especially for trans and queer youth. Although I am not a trans student myself, my brother is. He has told me how devastating it is to have his boundaries crossed again and again, completely disregarding his wishes to be called by a certain name and pronoun. I do not doubt that so many other voices are silent and have had this experience during high school. We need to open up the resources students have to counseling at our schools. There are kids out there who aren't necessarily trans but have questions about themselves and their genders. And though the counselors should not be expected to have all the answers to the questions these students have, we should still have counselors and resources in the public school system to properly handle this issue. I've spoken directly to my brother and others in the trans community and heard their experiences with the problems these policies pose, how feelings of detriment cannot be ignored when a lack of respect is shown from teachers to their own students. It's hard enough experiencing prejudice from people you don't even know, but when you step into a so-called safe environment, sit in your seat, and give attention to a person who is supposed to give you knowledge about the world, show you complete disregard for who you are, it is not a safe environment anymore. This simply cannot be tolerated among any kind of striving learning environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Allen, then Dylan Ricks, then Elizabeth Nuski.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Katie Allen. I'm a senior at Ocean Lakes High School. I'm a computer programmer. I'm a theater kid. I play guitar. I like parties when I know everyone there and I only have to play board games. I also happen to be trans.
Katie, can you speak into the microphone? Lift it up higher. There you go.
That's just another fact about me, and that's all it should be. It should just be another fact about me that's accepted. Took a while to figure this out about myself. Had a friend in middle school come out as a guy, and I remember the first thing thinking is, why would anyone want to be a dude? Ended up taking me three years. But I eventually figured it out, and I am a more whole and complete person now. I've been able to figure out who I want to be, who I need to be, who I know I've always been meant to be. And some kids don't get that. I am extremely lucky with the family that I have. Some kids are betrayed when they come out. They're no longer respected and treated with dignity. And others even aren't given the chance to come out because they know, just from what their family says and does and believes in, that it is unsafe for them to come out, and that their home would become a hostile environment. School is one of the only places that these students can take solace and feel safe and accepted. And to take that away is to seriously endanger their well-being. Okay. There is... It should be enough that this policy is even threatening to make a student's life worse to consider shooting it down. But the fact that, as many people here have already said, that there is a very real risk to life should be more than enough to say that we shouldn't even have to consider-
Thirty seconds.
If... And again, with the parental rights, then I just ask that you consider... I know you are expected to listen to the parents, but you are obligated to protect the students. And if those are at odds, I just ask that you consider whether you will listen to a handful of people with very little personal stakes or students whose lives may very well be on the line.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dylan Ricks, then Elizabeth Nuski, then Lucy Johnson. Dylan Ricks? Elizabeth Nuski?
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Hope Panuski, and my pronouns are she/her. Look at that clock you have put up there and notice how it took me about five seconds to tell you my preferred name and my pronouns. Why do we believe in valuing our five seconds over students' mental well-being? Why should we value a few people's beliefs over the future generation's life? The real answer to this question is that we shouldn't. Now, you might be wondering why I signed up as Elizabeth instead of Hope. Well, I did it because that was on my birth certificate. I've gone by Hope my entire life, and when my peers forgot my legal name is Elizabeth, as you can guess, a couple of them start using it. Something I have noticed when someone starts calling me Elizabeth is that they are usually trying to show me that they don't respect me. And as you can imagine, that gets me a little bit upset, because this can be seen as a form of bullying. Bullying is something BBCPS prides itself in dealing with in a seemingly zero-tolerance way. Yet, this board is deciding that these things the school deals with on a regular basis should be considered acceptable purely because these students do not fit social norms. The fact is that the fact that we can even consider allowing this type of discrimination in schools is completely and utterly unacceptable. The fact that schools are trying to educate their students not to discriminate against others and then go and make discrimination a thing allowed only for certain minority groups shows just how hypocritical we can really be. This policy gives parents almost complete control over their child's life, and they are allowed to show... And whether they are allowed to show their true identity or not. Why should we be endangering these students' well-being in order to, quote-unquote, "protect parents' rights"? When a parent comes to school and says that their child cannot call a child by their preferred names, say it was Lucifer, do we go and say, "Oh, well, because it's against your religion, you don't have to call the child by their name," and then say it as "protect parenting rights"? Well, we can't let parents take control of every aspect of schools. In the end, this is still a learning environment, and the only way students will actually want to listen and learn in school is if they feel respected by their peers and their teachers. We can't go and take away yet another safe place from our youth, because if it keeps going down this path, students will have nowhere to go that they feel safe.
Thirty seconds.
School is for the students, not for the parents or teachers. This is why I urge the board members here today to reject the model policy, not only for the youth, but to help keep the learning environment a safe place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lucy Johnson, then Bradley Joseph Fish, then Charlie Levine. Lucy Johnson? Bradley Joseph Fish?
Welcome.
It is worth a minute to take a step back and identify what the 2022 model policy actually entails, specifically about the value of a name. A name is not and never will be something that should be decided upon lightly, nor is it an easy task to start beginning with a... To start identifying with a new one. A name is also not defined as something decided by a parent or guardian. It is a way to refer to a person, place, or thing by any dictionary definition. The model policy would allow for the use of calling many transgender students by names that no longer define them. For example, the changing of a last name for the purposes of marriage is still very common. So if you were married and changed your last name, but then got a divorce and changed back, wouldn't you find it insulting to still be referred to this name that no longer defines you? Maybe not right away. If it's a simple error, but if everyone around you continued to abide by the old you, knowing full well the change that you have gone through, wouldn't that have an effect? In many ways, the feelings involved with transitioning students is like a divorce from one way to another. It is the duty of the school board to protect this marginalized community during their weakest hour, not to take away from them, but to protect them in any way possible. At present, all that we are asking for is for things to stay the same as they are. We will always fight for the rights of transgender individuals, and any encroachment on the already low standards will do a monumental amount of damage. We simply want names to be recognized, for pronouns to be respected, and for our peers to be held to an equitable standing with everyone else. If we let the rights of trans people slip, that is a failure of the system and a violation of what this country stands for. The right to free speech is what you endanger by considering the model policy. This right, enshrined in the Constitution, that is all too commonly cited as a means of defending hate speech, can also be used to defend groups who require it. It is how we are all here today and are able to voice our minds and opinions built off of true experience and personal struggles and triumphs. If you believe that we are inexperienced and out of touch just because we are young, then I would like to say that that's simply untrue. We have grown up in a changing society where values change for the better year by year and where these changes have been fought for by our peers and role models. If there's any demographic that understands best the effects of the model policy, it's the one right before you. We are all a part of this fight. We all understand what the policy would do to us or our friends. and we are all united in fighting out of love and acceptance. We fight for new ideas and perspectives that will continue to march alongside the historical trend of progress. The model policy must be struck down for the good of every student who wants to see their peers, all of them succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charlie Levine, then Naomi Giedanu, and Elijah Gumm.
Welcome.
Charlie Levine is not here. I'm Naomi Giedanu. My name is Naomi Giedanu. I'm secretary for Citywide SCA, and I'm from Lanston High School. This is a letter from a trans student in Virginia Beach. Please listen to their concerns as they'd be in the crossfire if these policies were to be enacted. As much as I complain about it, school has actually proven to be a refuge for me. At school, I'm allowed to express myself in ways that would be met with derision at home. Entering high school is a tumultuous time in any kid's life. But for a kid just realizing they aren't trans... They are trans, it's even more confusing. Going into my freshman year, I was genuinely the most miserable I'd ever been. I attempted to come out at home, and I was told I was wrong. But once I gathered the courage, I told my friends and was met with acceptance. I don't think about being trans at school because I'm never forced to defend my identity. I'm just allowed to exist. Going into class with people who I know respect me is the most comfortable I've ever been. The people around me don't have to do anything to make me feel accepted because being trans isn't something that concerns them. To them, my identity doesn't have... Doesn't even have to register because they respect me for who I am. I've been able to forge adult relationships in which my identity is respected. But because of policies like the ones proposed, they'll be hesitant to use the name I've given them because of concerns about technically having to disclose my name I go by with my parents, and I completely understand. The type of parents that are given agency and the proposed policies are very clearly unsupportive ones. These policies would bias the system against supportive parents while giving preference to those who don't respect their trans kids. Right now, my preferred name is all I have. It's the only thing I have to prove that I am who I feel I am, and I am confident that's likely the case for a lot of trans kids my age. Policies that would make having a different name a reportable offense are a blatant attempt to harm trans youth. Schools and the friends we make there should be sanctuaries, and a policy like this seeks to dismantle that. Do not let the guise of parental agency deceive you. This is about trans rights, and letting these policies stand disregards them completely.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elijah Gumm, then A.J. Quatero, and then Addison McGinty.
Welcome.
Good evening, board. My name is Elijah Gumm. I'm a senior at First Colonial High School, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. This is a testimony from a trans student in VBCPS, the first of a few we have to share tonight. These are the students who will bear the burden if we make the mistake of accepting these policies. Put students first. Seek growth. Be open to change. Do great work together. Value differences. These are the first words on the Virginia Beach School's website. Making a space unsafe for students is not helping them learn. It makes them dread attending school for fear of being outed, harmed, bullied, or even killed for simply being trans or questioning their gender and expression. These policies themselves are odd. To quote them directly, quote, "If such student is self-identifying as a gender that is different than his biological sex, shall as soon as practicable contact at least one of such student's parents to ask whether such parent is aware of the student's mental state and whether the parent wishes to obtain or has already obtained counseling for such student," end quote. Identifying as a different gender isn't something wrong to be sent over to counseling. It is nothing to be worried about. You should only be worried if the student is at risk of suicide. The link between transgender children and suicide is not because the act of being trans causes them to harm themselves. It is because of being marginalized and harmed by a lack of safe places makes our lives utterly miserable. I have friends that this rule would endanger. Friends who would be in danger of being sent to conversion camp. Friends who would be kicked out of their homes. Friends who could be harmed and abused because of this. These policies would be actively harming a percentage of children who may find the only place they are allowed to be themselves is at school. Children are fearing for their safety because this board is hanging their safety on a vote. Why is my life and safety something to be debated over? Am I not as important and valued as the next child? Does me being trans make my life less valuable? Alongside that, this violates the privacy of the children. Students should be allowed to set the boundary themselves about what they tell their parents. You do not know how the home life of a student is. You are not there. You cannot know if you are putting the child in harm. What gives you the right to share something a child could have told you in confidence? So now I ask you, think of the children. And I don't mean the hypothetical children in your mind's eye, the actual children that this would harm. The transgender and the gender nonconforming children. We are asking you to protect... To help protect us. Don't just use your words and say you care. Show us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is A.J. Quatero, then Addison McGinty, then Chloe Croft.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is A.J. Quatero. My pronouns are they/them, and I am a 10th grade student at Floyd E. Callum High School. I spoke here for the first time on Valentine's Day. A few hours before I had arrived at the meeting, I had cried on the floor of the school bathroom out of fear. The exact policies that I am here in opposition to had never felt so real and tangible as they did while I sat huddled in the corner of that bathroom. I had been thinking about how my life would change if these policies were implemented, a thought that terrified me and still does. I was lucky enough to have had friends to console me, some of who are here today, who sat on a dirty bathroom floor wiping tears from my face with toilet paper just so they'd be sure I was okay. They made sure that I was temporarily free from the terror that I and other trans students know intimately. Now, you don't have to sit on a grimy bathroom floor or comfort someone with makeshift tissues in order to prevent that kind of pain and fear. All you have to do is make a choice. All you have to do is refuse these policies, and you will protect hundreds of transgender students who find consolation in the fact that their school is a safe space for them to be who they are. I know that it is easy to make a change that will hurt so many when it doesn't hurt you, but it is just as easy, if not easier, to make a change that will save so many from that hurt. This is not to say that pain is not inevitable. Discrimination against trans students will exist for a long time. But in this instance, pain is avoidable. By refusing these policies, we can take a step that encourages trans students to feel safe within their community. The safety of transgender students should not be up for debate, but it is. So I am here to ask you, in what world is it fair to force targeted hate and exclusion into our schools? To trans students, it won't matter how many friends they have to cry in the bathroom with. If the policies are carried out, there will be more harassment, more violence, and more deaths. School will become an environment where discrimination and hatred are accepted as the norm. It is not right to claim that these policies are for the betterment of our schools and students when the direct result of their implementation will be nothing but pain. And I wouldn't wish that pain onto any of you. And so I stand here today to ask you, no, to beg you, not to hurt the transgender students of Virginia Beach. We deserve to be safe. We deserve... We have so much to live for. So show us that you think so too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Addison McGinty, then Chloe Croft, then Ally Schwartz.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Addison McGinty, and I am a senior at Floyd E. Callum High School. My heart breaks with the possibility of this policy being instated simply because of the effects it will have on the transgender and non-binary community. The school board wants to do as much as they can to help and support the students in their personal and academic journey, do they not? But let me enlighten you. This is not helping. This is the opposite of helping. This is damaging. Fewer than one in three transgender and non-binary youth find their homes to be gender-affirming. But this number will decrease with this decision because teachers will be allowed to outrange their non-binary students to the parents and use the given name rather than the chosen one unless parental consent is provided. However, there are unfortunately many situations in which the parent will not be supportive of the child. This policy will allow teachers who are meant to support the students in their academic growth and to purposely deadname and completely disregard the students' pronouns, of which come from something so incredibly simple: respect, a lesson we all learn from early childhood and claim to enforce. But this, this is not respect. This is utter disrespect. The transgender and non-binary community deserve the same amount of respect given to anybody else. The teachers will be setting an example that will allow students to believe that transphobia is acceptable, but it's not. It's a form of bullying which alone is a terrible thing that is still highly present in public schools. Not only will the bullying of the transgender and non-binary community increase, the numbers of suicides and suicide attempts will increase as well. Students reflect off of what the teachers, parents, and other adult peers do to help influence the decisions. Incidents and acts against the transgender and non-binary community in public schools will continue to increase due to students learning from their teachers, and it will carry on through the rest of their lives. It will teach them that it's okay to disrespect and treat people differently because of their identity, which is who they are. And that is... It's not okay. It's... It's awful, really, what this is going to do to this community. Disregarding one's pronouns or chosen name is the same as disregarding them completely, making them feel like nothing, absolutely nothing. Their names are their individuality, their pronouns are their identity, and that should be respected. We are all humans living in this complex society. A name change should not determine who is or isn't human. It should not be difficult to refer to someone with a preferred pronouns. It is simple respect for one another. Somebody should not be treated any differently for their identity. Virginia Beach City Public Schools, we are a community, all of us, and we must learn to respect one another. And for those who will be deeply affected by this policy, I see you, I stand with you, and I will fight for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chloe Croft, then Ally Schwartz, then Calix Kimmel. Chloe Croft? Ally Schwartz?
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ally Schwartz, and I'm a senior at Floyd E. Callum High School. To be quite frank, it would be a grave mistake for our school district to enact Governor Youngkin's model policies. The current policies we have let students exist as a gender identity that they feel most comfortable with, which helps eliminate some of the fear and anxieties that follow transgender students every day. So despite all of that fear and hatred following transgender people, many students feel safe and supportive enough in your school district right now to go by their preferred gender identity. This should be a cause of celebration and acknowledgement of how much we have grown within our school system, growth that the governor urges you to eliminate. This policy has nothing to do with parental rights and everything to do with trying to silence LGBTQ+ people in places where their heterosexual and cisgender peers have been allowed to exist comfortably. This isn't me saying that students who aren't LGBTQ+ automatically have it easy at school. However, in many instances, district-wide policies have been enacted to make sure certain groups are given equitable opportunities. Why is it that transgender students aren't receiving that same equity? By outing transgender students to their parents, it robs them of not only their safety in some instances, but their choice to come out on their own terms. Nobody, not even parents, is owed the identity of anybody that is LGBTQ+. The right to have ownership over your identity is so important, and sometimes it's difficult for those who aren't in the community to truly understand that. And look, I know I can't convince every single person who spreads false anti-trans rhetoric that they are wrong, that transgender students are more than a statistic, that they deserve equity and respect at schools. But what I can do is stand up here today and hope that what I'm saying is being heard by the people who have the power to make decisions that affect thousands. And I understand that no matter which way you vote, somebody will be angry. But let me just ask you this. When did doing what is easy become more important than doing what is right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Calix Kimmel, then Jay Cook, then Eden Amato.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Calix Kimmel, and America is in the throes of chaos with the divide amongst our people greater than ever. And groups of oppressed people having to resort to violence to be heard, it is a surprise that there is so much more work to be done in order to assist marginalized groups of people to escape from systematic oppression, despite what seems like a more culturally open America in recent years. Students are still having to fight for their right to be referred to by a different name or to be referred to with different pronouns in order to be comfortable. A common issue I see at school board meetings or on major news outlets is calling trans rights a debate. It's not a debate. I don't mean there is no back and forth exchanging of points so that I don't have my time to speak. I'm saying that we're debating a group of people's right to live, to exist. I could come up here and spout statistics, but I don't want to reduce my peers' suicides to politics. Rather, I believe a more nuanced conversation should be had. Many people are angry and passionate about the growing hatred for transgender children in America, and rightfully so. But more than angry, I'm sad. I'm sad that my peers cannot feel comfortable in a place as universal as school. I'm sad that with the pollution of news outlets with bias, a system as integral... A system as integral as the Virginia Department of Education cannot break away from the trend of polarity nor the evils of oppression. I'm sad that a love for your peers, despite their identity as transgender, is being dispelled in mainstream media and now in our school system. Inefectual policies like this only have the effect of inhibiting freedoms. Only the ego of someone as artistically cruel as a person could think to take upon themselves the decision to give people a right to live happily. On the VDE website, the 2022 model policies are labeled as "2022 Model Policies on the Privacy, Dignity, and Respect for All Students and Parents in Virginia's Public Schools." Might not sub-students' form of respect come in using a preferred name or pronouns? When African-Americans were freed from slavery, the law in pursuit of happiness from the Declaration of Independence was cited. When women were first campaigning to gain their right to vote, the line "pursuit of happiness from the Declaration of Independence" was cited. It seems history truly does repeat itself. And I make no attempt to break the mold when I ask you, do my peers...
And that is time. Our next speaker is Jay... Our next speaker is Jay Cook, then Eden Amato, then Geneva Warren.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Jay Cook, and I'm a junior in VBCPS. January 30th through April 4th, or the span of time between the death dates of Mahatma Gandhi and Martin Luther King Jr., is known globally as the season for nonviolence. These 64 days promote King and Gandhi's philosophies of advocating for peace and justice through civil protest. This pacifism that we are in the midst of praising and celebrating is the essence all of us carry here with our words. We speak and lobby against harmful policies which will jeopardize the happiness, comfort, and even academic focus of our transgender youth. Policies such as deadnaming students would cause discomfort and psychological suffering by aggravating a child's gender dysphoria, as well as putting students at risk of being ridiculed, invalidated, and even harmed at home via forced outing of their identities. In our hearts, we strive for what King described as the beloved community, a place warded from hate and injustice, from hunger and from poverty for every person, not just the majority. Martin Luther fought for his black siblings. Gandhi fought for the children of India. Now we fight for the kids of Virginia Beach and their rights, their justice, and their happiness, those things that are placed on trial by the 2022 model transgender policies. We speak out against these unjust and dangerous policies regarding students' preferred names and pronouns and the disclosure of a student's identity to their parent or guardian without the student's prior knowledge or permission. In an article on the Goals of the Season for Nonviolence... In an article on the goals of the season for nonviolence, the Gandhi Foundation states, quote, "A culture of peace and nonviolence is created one choice at a time, one action at a time, and one day at a time," end quote. The culture of peace and nonviolence will only slip further away if you choose to plague transgender students with an unquenchable fear of exposure and invalidation that even unratified these policies are, are instilling in us. Instead, we urge you to join us in our quest for nonviolence, to choose continuity and with it love, support, and justice. You have heard the rates of poverty, of homelessness, and of suicide in transgender youth and young adults. I encourage you to contemplate how much these rates are at risk of rising if these policies are ratified. How many more children will feel the need to find escape, be it through emancipation or death? How much violence does there need to be for you to be begin to be repulsed by it? We stand here in front of you in an effort to prevent further emotional, physical, and self-inflicted violence amongst our peers. King's Fifth Principle of Nonviolence states, quote, "Nonviolence chooses love instead of hate. Nonviolence resists violence in the spirit as well as the body."
Thirty seconds.
"Nonviolent love is spontaneous, unmotivated, unselfish, and creative," end quote. So let us work together to choose love instead of hate and build our beloved community. Let us protect our students, trans and all, from violence itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eden Amato, then Geneva Warren, then Jacob Cruz.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Eden Amato, and I'm a freshman at Landstown High School. I'm a cisgender female, so you may think that these policies don't affect me, but they affect everyone close to me. To protect transgender students, we must take steps forward, not backward. These policies pose harm to transgender students in many ways. One of the ways these policies can cause harm is that not all parents support their children coming out. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, the chance of transgender students experiencing abuse is nearly double that of their cisgender classmates. According to, also according to goodtherapy.org, half of transgender adolescents attempt suicide by their 20th birthdays. These rates, it's just, it's hard to see because, I mean, passing these policies could make these rates far, far worse than they already are. Not only that, I mean, the abuse of parents just by finding out their child's identity is more than I can bear to think about. LGBTQ teenagers should come out to their parents on their own time, not being outed by their school or teacher. Schools are supposed to be safe spaces, and passing these policies would take steps backward in that department. LGBTQ students should feel seen and understood, just as their heterosexual peers, and passing these policies would throw that out the window. Another way these policies can cause harm is by making LGBTQ students feel unseen. If a student wants to be called by a different name or different pronouns, that should be allowed. When a teenager reaches the age of understanding themselves, I believe that they should openly be who they are without discrimination. According to Healthline, 32% of transgender people feel stigmatized when misgendered. If these policies are passed, teachers will be forced to misgender their students, who they truly just want to accept as human beings. And I believe that it could really harm students mentally, physically, and many other ways as well. Another thing that transgender students experience already is gender dysphoria. They're already very uncomfortable in their own skin, and when they feel misrepresented, as I said, it can cause far worse mental issues. I believe that many people view name changes as a way to leave their past self behind, and when they come to school, they should be who they want to be, instead of being forced to live in a skin that they don't want to live in. I believe that all transgender students deserve to feel respected and taken seriously as adults.
Thirty seconds.
Passing these policies would make them feel very silenced and unseen. I hope that this speech brings attention to the harm that these policies pose. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Geneva Warren, then Jacob Cruz, then Alex Estratt.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Geneva Warren, and I am from First Colonial High School.
Welcome.
The following letter is from a student of VBCPS that would be greatly affected by the 2022 trans model policies. I advise you to listen to their words and consider how these policies will detrimentally affect them and many others. I remember the moment I realized I was trans. It took me so long to come out to my friends. I remember shaking, afraid they wouldn't understand, that they would think I was gross or wrong in some way. When they embraced me, the relief was immense. Then I was scared of coming out to my teachers, but I was also excited and happy at the idea of them saying my new name and using my new pronouns. Still afraid, I told them, only to be accepted and respected once again, it meant the world to me. After coming out to those who mattered most to me, I felt lighter, happier. A subtle beam of light had cut through my depression, and I found myself smiling wholeheartedly for one of the first times in my troubled youth. I knew my parents would understand them, and that fear was much greater, much more intense. The shaky relationship I had with my abusive parents, the uncomfortable pleasantness that I had fallen into when they, when I did what they pleased, would be broken if they knew. I came out to my parents this summer under the hope that they might show me the same care my teachers did. This was not the case. The denial of my identity as a vanity issue, unrealistic, disgusting, and delusional has been horrible for my mental health. Constantly, I am called the wrong name, which never expressed who I was. The name is a weight on my shoulders and now on my being. I am called the wrong pronouns as my parents cannot accept change, the change that is fundamental to any trans child as they transition into who they were meant to be all along. I have denied this right to grow and change. As I have recently turned 18, I had to leave home due to the fighting. I have had to organize my own therapy, which I be, which, which I will be going off insurance in order to do. Should my parents find out about this, I will be disowned and kicked out, unable to see my younger brother who needs his brother's safeguard from, to hit, to safeguard him from their parents. These policies threaten trans children's safety and mental well-being. It forces trans children into potentially abusive or life-endangering situations. Not only that, it forces teachers to not care about their students. In order to out their students and throw them verbally into the fire, teachers have to drop the previous connection they had with the student, they have to not care about the student. A trans student's non-abusive household can become abusive following the realization of the child's gender identity. These model policies endanger our youth and break the fundamental trust between students and their mentors.
Our next speaker is Jacob Cruz, then Alex Estratt, then Ari Wheeler.
Good evening, board members. There are a lot of reasons my friends and I keep showing up to these meetings, and there's a lot of reasons not to as well. It's tiresome writing and editing speeches. It's tiresome trying to make sure that everyone has a ride, especially when the president announces on Friday that he's going to come to this, to your city, and we have a meeting on Tuesday, so it takes 90 minutes to get home when it normally takes 20. The whole process is tiresome, sometimes to the point where I nearly can't stand it, but there is something even harder for me to stomach than the work. That's when my friends are getting bullied, and I see it in a lot of places. The bullying that I speak of isn't the classic kid getting shoved in a hallway or stuffed in a locker or called a nasty name kind of bullying. It's kind of a relic of a, of a bygone time. The kind of bullying that I'm talking about is unfortunately all too often coming from outside of the schools. It's coming from people who are so happy to flood every video we post of a speech with hateful comments. It comes from people calling these students abominations, liars, delusional, sometimes people who are speaking at these very meetings. And it comes most of all, and I'd hate to say it, from these policies that we keep talking about. The word bullying is defined as seeking to harm, intimidate, or coerce, and whether it was in their design or not, I absolutely see that in these policies that we talk about here. The 2022 model guidelines are coercing and intimidating students into hiding who they are, and you've heard about that already tonight. And their well-being is being harmed as a result as well. This matter of whether or not we're going to call a student by their name was never even a question until the Department of Education made it one. No one was coming to this board to say that we need to respect the rights of these students because it was just understood. This Department of Education that's telling us that we need to go in this direction is this is the same Department of Education that cost schools across the state $201 million with an accounting error. This is the same Department of Education that is run by a superintendent that was brought in from Wyoming. And not to completely disrespect the Department of Education, but I can't understand why we, we are waiting on them, why are we, why we are waiting on a group that, however valuable they are, do not represent us, in order to make a decision that is right for us. Why does some government apparatus that doesn't even know our schools choose whether the well-being of our students is protected or how we're going to go about that? This board can and should take a stand now, create safeguards that protect students, and make it clear that students can be called by their name-
Thirty seconds.
...without fear regardless of whatever the Department of Education puts out at whatever point. It isn't an accident that we come to our local school board. We could have spent all of the months and all of the effort that we have on letter-writing to Richmond or lobbied our local congressman, but we haven't. We've come here time and time again, and we come here because at the end of the day, you're the guardians of VBCPS students. Others might try and assert their will in this district, but make no mistake, the Virginia Beach School Board, at least on the matter of these policies, has the final say.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Alex Estratt, then Ari Wheeler.
Welcome.
Thank you. I feel like we make the mistake of seeing transgender students as just a writer, speaker at the school board, or some foreign concept, and we see the word transgender as simply just a label. However, that's not the only thing transgender students are. They are individual humans with hopes, dreams, and feelings, just like you and me. So I ask this board to put yourselves in the shoes of a transgender student for a brief moment. Imagine walking into school every day worrying about whether or not you'll be called by your name. Imagine walking around the school building, not knowing if you can trust your teachers, the very people who are there to help you. These policies will result in transgender students further isolating themselves away from their peers, teachers, and guidance counselors because they cannot trust those who surround them. Imagine walking into work every day, being called by a name that isn't your own. Imagine not being able to use a nickname or a preferred name simply because someone refused to sign a slip of paper. Imagine having to get a slip of paper signed in order to use a nickname or preferred name. Imagine facing physical and emotional abuse for simply requesting that piece of paper be signed. These policies are a solution in a search for a problem. To anyone who's actually in a school building, names are not a topic of debate. They are just names. It's as simple as that. Just like how I prefer to go by Alex instead of Alexander, or you may have your preferred name that isn't on your birth certificate, Icarus deserves to be called Icarus, and Jay deserves to be called Jay, no matter what some ink on a piece of paper says. I know many of you on this board are parents or grandparents, so I want to help put this into perspective. Imagine if this was your child or grandchild. Imagine see, having your, imagine seeing your child take their life over a policy that could have been prevented. No parent nor grandparent should ever have to bury their child, whether they believed in every decision they made or not. So when I say it is our duty to protect our fellow students, I am not talking about it like it's one of my high school debate topics. I am talking about human beings, like your children, my friends, or even us right here. We are one and the same, and whether or not you support all our choices should not matter because I know two things are true: you don't want us suffering, and you don't want us dead. I hope that you do not consider these policies as just an ideological-
Thirty seconds.
...or political issue, but that you truly see the lives that would be impacted if these policies were to take place in a Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ari Wheeler.
Hello. My name is Ari Wheeler, and my pronouns are they/them. I am a senior at First Colonial High School, and the issue of the 2022 new model policies are one that are very close to me. I first came out as non-binary at school. I live with unsupportive parents who, and I wanted to ensure that I had settled down in my identity before I came out to them. I had this choice, the choice to experiment in a safe area surrounded by those who were willing to offer me support. I had the opportunity I needed, and I, and using it, I grew confident enough to share this part of me with my parents. However, this is not the case for every student. Imagine sharing a part of yourself with the people you trust, with your teachers, those who you look up to. Now picture those same people showing that part of you with those you don't trust. Now imagining, now imagine going home to a war zone of insults and veritable abuse, hearing disappointment, unnatural, now being attached to your name. This is the reality for many transgender students who have been forcibly outed to their parents. This is the reality supported by the 2022 new model policies. Children who are afraid, terrified of coming out to their parents have a reason to be so. A fear of being kicked out, the dread of hearing their parents' reaction, the worst-case scenarios flying through their heads. Children grow up hearing their parents' views, seeing their hatred or acceptance. A child knows their parents, knows what their reactions will be. A school does not. If a child chooses to come out to their parent, it is because they trust them enough to do so. If a child doesn't come out, it is because they know the ramifications of do- Whether that be listening to poison spew from their parents' lips or bruises bloom under their fists, that child knows best. With parents, with teachers being forced to out their students to parents, not only does the guilt of possible abuse fall on the shoulders of teachers, all trust is broken with those teachers. With the teachers' perceived betrayal, the student will, will the student really be able to trust these mandatory reporters? Will these students be able to turn to adults if they need help? Along with breaking trust in teachers, the new model policies allow parents to forbid, forbid their child-
Thirty seconds.
...from going to a guidance counselor. This takes away yet another mandatory reporter for a student to turn to when in trouble. When I came out to my parents, I had a choice, a choice that all students should be provided with. With the 2022 new model policies, schools are turning their back on students and their needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was our last student speaker. We'll move on to the next speakers, which will be Kathy Slindy. Speaker number two, Dr. Banks, needed to cancel. Then it'll be Sarah Comer, and then Russell Shirk.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chairwoman Briggs, school board members, and Dr. Spence. My name is Kathleen Slindy, and I serve as the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I'm here to advocate for instructional teacher pay scale option one, even with its 43 steps, and the professional level two pay grade option two with its 30 steps, and all the proposed changes in the unified scale. These are all moves in the right direction and require funding. As you've heard from many speakers in the past, we need to have teachers and their professional, support professionals pay the professional wage in order to attract and retain highly qualified professionals and maintain the impressive academic results that make Virginia Beach a desirable location for businesses and families. However, there are other changes you can make to policies and practices that will help, help retain educators and support professionals that are not budget items. An example would be the transfer policy that was discussed in this afternoon's mini-retreat. VPEA has been involved in conversations with other division locals around the state discussing these transfer policies. Virginia State Code allows divisions to have more flexibility than we currently see in VBCPS policy and practice. So every year, we see members leave Virginia Beach to work somewhere else, often returning to VBCPS when an alternative site or position opens up. A change in the transfer policy might help retain them. As I said, the VPEA has resources to bring to a discussion with the Policy Review Committee if the chair, Mrs. Manning, and the other members are open to that. Other areas where budget money is not required for meaningful changes resulting in a more manageable work environment include the calendar, schedules for extra duties and plannings, professional development opportunities, workload, meaningful incentives, and respectful communications, just to mention a few. So I am asking for your support for the budget changes to the instructional and unified pay scales, and for your willingness to open up more opportunities for employees to come to the table, to discuss changes that will make VBCPS a more desirable place to build a career with professional wages, benefits, and an atmosphere of respect and partnership. These will make it the place to stay and build a meaningful and fulfilling life as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Sarah Comer, then Russell Shirk, then Dawn Uman.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Spence, and members of the board. My name is Dr. Sarah Comer. I'm a physical therapist and here to speak on behalf of my colleagues in the Physical and Occupational Therapy Departments, and to strongly express that option two of the proposed professional instructional level two pay grade be adopted. I have been with Virginia Beach City Public Schools for five years. Prior to this, I worked in Hampton City Schools and in the private sector. I personally know the pay discrepancies here in Virginia Beach. My salary at Hampton City Schools was significantly higher, but I left that to work closer to home, here in Virginia Beach. For the past five years, I've been working with my fellow therapists to advocate for fair pay, and we have expressed our concerns numerous times to the appropriate personnel. We would like to call your attention to the inaccuracies in the market study presented by Segal. First, the study only compared two school districts, Chesapeake and Chesterfield. All of the other school districts have waiting and response in the notes section. Please note that all information on salaries for all school districts is publicly available- information on salaries for all school districts is publicly available and is consistently higher than ours. We are the anomaly. This information has been shared via email with Human Resources and the School Board. Secondly, Segal has incorrectly reported Chesapeake's midpoint salary at over $2 less an hour. This is critical because this is a salary Segal then compared to Virginia Beach City Public Schools midpoint salary. Segal noted Chesapeake's original midpoint salary as $51.67 per hour. This is a miscalculation. In mathematical terms, the midpoint is simply the minimum plus the maximum divided by two. For example, for Chesapeake, their minimum is $40.42, and the maximum is $67.05. This is the man and max that Segal notes. However, when these numbers are added together and divided by two, the correct quotient is $53.74. Again, this is over a $2 difference in pay an hour. This simple calculation error caused the rest of the data to be skewed. Segal then took that incorrectly low Chesapeake midpoint salary and averaged it with Chesterfield's original midpoint to get an even lower number. The result of these errors is a misrepresentation and a poorly constructed comparison of VBS salaries. Another misleading fracture of the study is the comparison of pay scales, which include different endpoints for years of experience. For example, Chesapeake's scale goes to 35 years. Virginia Beach's U-19 goes to 43 years. The midpoints for years of service are not equivalent. A therapist working here in Virginia Beach would need to work here for 22 years in order to make what an entry-level therapist would make in Chesapeake. These conclusions of the Segal studies are based on inaccuracies and faulty logic. They do not accurately suggest fair competitive or compensation for our specialists.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Russell Shirk, then Dawn Uman, then Lucy Layden.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Russell Shirk, a Virginia Beach resident. My folk, the focus of my comments tonight are in support of the Virginia Transgender School Policies 2022, specifically parental rights. Federal policy requires parental or legal guardian approval for a 17-year-old to join the military, arguably a life-altering decision. My story. In high school, I never planned to go to college. Rather, I planned to go directly into the Marine Corps upon graduation, the year 1969. Being 17, I needed parental approval. My mom refused to sign. Was I happy with her decision? No. So I made another life-altering decision and paid my way through college, then entered the Marine Corps as an officer. One year later, as an infantry platoon commander in Okinawa, once again, I came up against the 18-year-old policy when I had to tell two of my Marines they had to stay behind while the rest of us were flown out on a combat mission. Those two Marines were 17. In conclusion, unless a student is 18, the student, school staff, and parents should be governed by the policy as written regarding this life-altering decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dawn Uman, then Lucy Layden, then Brenda Pence.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Dr. Spence, and members of the board. My name is Dawn Uman. I'm a high school math teacher and secretary of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I continue to follow the work you are doing as it relates to the budget, and I am pleased to see that you have found a way to fund option one for instructional employees. It is also refreshing to see the update you made for our colleagues who fall in the professional level two category. Thank you for recognizing the important work being done by these employees. If the governor and our elected officials in Richmond should find more money to give the division, I'm asking you to commit to adding it to the salary and compensation for your employees. School employees are still paying catch-up from years of judgmental neglect. This year, it was awesome to have two wellness days. It is my understanding that we will not have the wellness days next year. I hope you will change your mind and continue to offer these much-needed opportunities for a brief respite. At the school retreat in July, the consultant from the Segal Group shared results from the spring climate survey. She said that 62% of the employees responded to the survey, and that over 5,000 comments were offered as to how we could improve employee recruitment and retention. The Segal Group categorized the 5,000 comments into four categories. They were student behavior, workload, communication, and respect or work culture. Addressing these concerns are not line items in your budget, and many do not cost money. There are many nominatory things you can do to improve the working conditions for employees and the learning conditions for students. Student behavior must be addressed. We are hearing from our members that they do not feel supported when they refer students for discipline issues. Workload concerns can be addressed by protecting a teacher's planning time. Members tell us they lose planning time because they're in various meetings, such as collaboration meetings with specialists or special education meetings. While these meetings may need to occur, it should not infringe on a teacher's planning time. Many specialists are so busy covering classes, they do not have time to do their primary jobs. Workload can also be addressed by reexamining how many pre- and post-assessments a teacher must give in grade. Do so many tests really need to be given? When do teachers get to teach and students get to learn? Respect or work culture costs nothing. Many teachers in the survey indicated that they were considering leaving due to management. It costs nothing to be kind and supportive. Before a teacher is placed on an action plan, do a deep dive into what support and interventions have been provided. We need to do all we can to assist teachers in need so we can help them grow and stay in their profession. Too often, the action plan is punitive and not helpful. Let's be honest, some people know when their workplace is not a good fit. Look at the transfer policy and allow those teachers who think a change of scenery might be good for everyone to explore transferring as an option. You have tried to address the communication issue by hosting the enhanced employee input sessions. I attended this session in November and look forward to learning what information you gathered from these sessions and how you will move forward. Hosting them is good, but acting on them is necessary. Lastly, another way to demonstrate respect for your employees is to allow for collective bargaining. The employees who are in the schools do the work, need to be at the table, working with you to improve working and learning conditions. Collective bargaining is an avenue that allows for that. Who knows? Working together, we might just improve recruitment and retention.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lucy Layden, then Brenda Pence, then Hollis Frye.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Dr. Spence, and School Board members. My name is Dr. Layden. I currently serve as the department chair of the Physical Therapy Staff. I appreciate this opportunity to address you tonight, and to urge you to adopt option two of the proposal before you. At this point in the process, you have already seen and heard all of the salient and relevant information, the comparative data of surrounding communities, and the oftentimes passionate pleadings of my colleagues. So, in my limited time tonight, I'd like to focus more on what it is our department actually does, and why the adoption of option two is critically important to providing the federally mandated services, which, along with the other critically important services we provide, makes up our mission in VBCPS. Physical and occupational therapists are highly trained medical professionals with a unique skill set. In addition to providing these federally mandated services and treatments to very often fragile students with medically complex diagnoses and histories, we also provide training to teachers and staff, supervise therapist assistants, serve as clinical instructors for students currently enrolled in OT and PT programs, and consult with staff, parents, and student advocates. In short, we are tasked with applying our skills to create the best possible educational environment for students entitled to receive services. This often requires us to perform a delicate balancing act to accommodate competing interests while adhering to federal and state regulations. After more than 24 years working within VBCPS, I can attest to the dedication and commitment of every therapist I've worked with, most of whom have been here as long or longer than myself. My deep concern, both for the short and long term, is that dedication and commitment will not be enough to retain and attract the personnel required to fulfill our mission. I would venture to say that without the adoption of the new proposal, and perhaps even after its adoption, Virginia Beach schools will still face the serious tactical and strategic problems of retaining current staff and attracting new professionals to fill current and future staffing vacancies. In the PT department, only 40% of our staff work full-time. The rest are part-time to work in the private sector. These employees could potentially fill staffing vacancies if they worked full-time with VB schools. Also bear in mind that since 2016, all new PTs graduating accredited schools are graduating from doctoral programs. This pool of potential employees with doctorates in their respective fields will demand competitive compensation packages as they enter the workforce. I urge the board to adopt option two of the proposal as the best option to begin addressing our current problems facing our departments. I believe it also provides a framework for future changes to retain and attract the highly-trained professionals required to provide those federally mandated services for the students of VBCPS. Thank you for your time and service. We'd also like to thank HR.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brenda Pence, then Hollis Frye, then Andrea Kearney.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Brenda Pence, and I am a retired Virginia Beach school teacher and a concerned citizen. Indeed, the rentless stripping away of parental rights is a sad reality across the entire state of Virginia. On February the 16th, the Senate Education and Health Committee rejected five House bills that sought to recognize and strengthen the rights of Virginia parents. The bills covered the right to know if their child wants to change gender, to be notified of obscene books in their school library, a right to have access to their child's medical needs, their records, and the right to know of the impact of the school policies upon their children. These basic parental right bills couldn't even get out of committee for a vote. Don't you think enough is enough? The failure to protect parental rights must stop, and the Virginia Beach School Board is the grassroots place to change the tide and start standing up for the basic human rights of all parents to protect their children, especially during their most vulnerable years. And yes, that means to be able to protect children from obscene books in the library, harmful social media, unhealthy social trends, sex trafficking, and the right of parents to affirm their children's biological identity. Parents have the responsibility to guide their young sons into manhood and their young daughters into womanhood. Parents know the current transgender policies put into place under Governor Northam do not support their parental rights, nor does it protect their children from the harmful consequences of his policies. Have you all forgotten the two girls who were raped by a transgender male in two different schools in Northern Virginia? How did Governor Northam's policies protect these two young girls? The point is, they didn't, because the current policies can't. Governor Yonkin's 2022 transgender policies helped to restore parental right, oversight, and protection for their children from harmful social trends. Therefore, our school board's position should be-
Thirty seconds.
-not only support, but also to guard parental rights. How? Simply stop nullifying the parental voice and choice. I urge you to vote yes in support of parental rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hollis Frye, then Andrea Kearney, then Pamela Mudway.
Welcome.
Madam Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Dr. Spence, and School Board members. My name is Holly Frye, and I am one of the occupational therapists, and I am here to ask you to approve the new pay scale for physical and occupational therapists, option two. I was hired as the first OT in beach schools in 1978. Along with one PT, we were a team of two, providing federally mandated services to students with disabilities under public law 94142. In 1990, an amendment changed the law's name to IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. We currently provide services under the federal mandates of IDEA. During the past 45 years, the OT and PT department has grown from two therapists to more than 26, providing evaluations, direct therapy services, consultation services, and supervision of certified peer professionals. Over the years, I have seen district support for the OTs and PTs erode away. At one time, we were able to apply for and receive the professional teacher stipend. That is no longer available to us. We are professionally certified and are required to be licensed through the Virginia Department of Health. We have continuing education requirements. We used to receive financial support for this mandated continuing education. However, that was discontinued. Our compensation is not kept up with that of neighboring school districts, and Virginia Beach has had difficulty hiring and retaining therapists. This puts additional demands on the therapy staff as we work to make sure all IEP mandated services are covered. When I heard that VB schools was going to consider putting us on a new pay scale, professional instructional level two, I was elated. This will recognize us as valued therapists and part of the team. We are not teachers. We are not custodians, cafeteria workers, or accountants. We are pediatric therapists, a vital part of the education team. We view things from a slightly different lens. We are part of the team that helps our students learn and develop into successful and independent humans. I ask that you support the new professional instructional pay scale, option two, for occupational and physical therapists. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea Kearney, then Pamela Mudway. Julie Shepherd had to cancel, so then it will be Camyn Dunkley.
Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Spence and members of the board. As stated, I am Andrea Kearney, and I help oversee the Behavior Intervention Specialist Department. I'm here tonight to provide some additional information about the highly qualified professionals within our department, as well as advocate for option two on the professional instructional scale. I recognize that you have a difficult decision ahead of you, and want to focus on a shared desire to do the best job for our students and families. Part of that shared desire relates to hiring and retaining critical staff who provide support for students who demonstrate behavioral challenges. As has been shared with you, a master's degree is required to even be considered for the position of Behavior Intervention Specialist. There is also a clear preference for hiring those who have a teaching license, as well as those who have obtained or are striving to obtain a license and certification as a board-certified behavior analyst, referred to as a BCBA moving forward. The preference for a BCBA is indicated in the job posting. Obtaining the BCBA credential takes years of post-master's level coursework, as well as the requirement to obtain 2,000 supervised fieldwork hours, passing a rigorous board exam, along with the expense of maintaining both the license and certification. All of this is no easy feat. Over 80% of our specialists have or are seeking this credential, with over 50% already BCBAs. Involvement from a division-level BCBA is requested by advocates, parents, and private therapists on a regular basis. In addition, 70% of our department also hold and maintain a teaching license. This has and will continue to benefit the division, not just because of our understanding of instruction when we support classroom staff, but also in the ways the division has utilized us, such as subbing, placement back in classrooms to help cover needs, assisting with shortages across other positions such as OPEC instructional specialists, and that list goes on. Much like occupational therapists and school psychologists, our department has very well-paid opportunities to work privately. Just this year, we have lost numerous people to private work, and this will continue to happen if the pay doesn't become more competitive. We are teacher advocates, and we don't want to dismiss the need for higher pay for teachers. We know firsthand the shortages, as we spend significant amounts of time in schools and classrooms, helping to provide support for teachers and classroom staff.
Thirty seconds.
A big part of that support relies on retaining those who serve a critical role in helping to decrease maladaptive behaviors while increasing pro-social behaviors. On behalf of the Behavior Intervention Specialists, we would like to thank the board for considering the professional instructional scale and express our support for option two so that we can continue to hire and retain highly qualified professionals to support teachers and the behavioral needs of the division.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pamela Mudway, then Cameron Dunkley, then Carolyn Myrick.
Welcome.
Hello, Dr. Spence and members of the board. I am a Behavior Intervention Specialist for the Division, a licensed and board-certified behavior analyst, and a licensed teacher. Andrea just provided you with the general information about our position, and I'm here to share more specific details about what we do. Behavior is one of the greatest concerns coming out of schools nationwide, and in Virginia Beach, our position is often the first line of support that schools reach out to. Hiring and retaining qualified Behavior Intervention Specialists allows us to play a critical role in providing that support. So I am here tonight to thank the board for considering the professional instructional scale, advocate for option two in the scale, while also acknowledging the difficult decisions ahead of you. As you work to make the decisions that will impact students and families, I'd like to share more about what we do. We ensure data is collected and assessments are completed to allow teams to make informed decisions as it relates to student behavior. We attend collaborative team meetings to support efforts to address behavioral challenges. We spend significant time in classrooms alongside teachers and staff to provide support with crisis intervention. We develop and deliver professional development to individual staff members, small and large group teams, administrate- members, small and large group teams, administrators, division-wide staffing groups, and the greater Virginia Beach community. Behavior Intervention Specialists provide support for prevention, intervention, and teaching strategies for at-risk behaviors. One of the biggest concerns that our department often hears from teachers are the many challenges they face daily with student behaviors. These concerns come from both special and general education staff, and include our youngest learners in the early childhood setting up through our graduating seniors. Those concerns were heard, and this year alone, as we do in Virginia Beach public schools, a large number of departments, including School Leadership, Teaching and Learning, Student Support Services, and the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children, collaborated to provide support related to those concerns. The Behavior Intervention Specialists were tasked with providing extensive professional development on topics such as safety concerns in classrooms, crisis response training, de-escalation techniques, trauma-sensitive behavioral approaches, and fostering cooperative learning environments. To date this school year alone, the Behavior Intervention Specialists have provided more than 110 professional learning sessions for our Virginia Beach staff and stakeholders. We are needed now more than ever to support the challenges that our teachers and administrators face daily, and the escalating behavioral challenges our society is facing. On behalf of the Behavior Intervention Specialists, we would like to thank the board for the role you play in supporting our students and families. Retention of highly qualified staff-
Thirty seconds.
...building level support on a daily basis is a big part of that role. We want to thank you for considering the Professional Instructional Scale and express our support for Option Two, so that we can continue to hire and retain highly qualified professionals to support teachers and the behavioral needs of our division. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Camden Dunkley, and then Carolyn Myrick.
Good evening, members of the school board.
Welcome.
I'm not quite sure what to say. You've heard speech upon speech from students pleading with you to respect their own and their friends' existence. I'm not sure what else can be said or done to have you understand our pleas. I know you've heard real-life implications of these policies, but I'd like to continue in this verse. Last meeting, you heard that a 15-year-old trans girl from England had been stabbed to death. While we recoil in this news, these occurrences aren't rare. Kaylee Love Light, Marquee MJ Jackson, Destiny Howard, Diamond Jackson McDonald, Daniel Aston, Kelly Loving, Tiffany Banks, Samaj Billingsley, A.C. Morrison, Maya Allen, DeeDee Ricks, Maddie Hoffman, Aaron Lynch, Candy Reed, Hayden Davis, Maricela Castro, Cherry Bush, Keisha Chanel Gerder, Martesia Richmond, Kitty Monroe, Shomane Giselle Marie, Brazil Johnson, Sasha Mason, Chanelika E.L. Dior Hemingway, Nedra Sequence Morris, Ray Musket, Fern Feather, Arianna Mitchell, Mila Love Parker, Kenyatta Kesha Webster, Catherine Katie Newhouse, Tatiana LaBelle, Paloma Vasquez, Matthew Angelo Spampito, Naomi Skinner, Cypress Ramos, Duval Princess, and Amari Lay. I've just read you the names of trans people killed in 2022. Not those who committed suicide, those who were murdered for having the tenacity to simply be who they are. Two of those names, Arianna Mitchell and Aaron Lynch, were killed in our home state of Virginia. As heartbreaking long- as heartbreakingly long as this list is, it is incomplete. These are only the individuals that who we know about. The true number of those murdered will remain unknown. The attitudes of those who have committed these heinous crimes had their hateful attitudes solidified in childhood. These attitudes were apparent in their school days, and nothing was done to change their mindset. Enacting these policies will send the message that we don't matter, and it is okay to kill us. I stand here and demand, please don't allow attitudes that justify murder. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Myrick.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am a retired teacher at Virginia Beach Schools, and I'm also friends, close friends, with a retired school psychologist in Virginia Beach Schools. We actually work together in many meetings. When I think about what I've heard, she reminded me, I asked her, she reminded me of something that happened to her before she retired. She said, "Actually, Carolyn, I actually had an experience exactly with parents not agreeing with what their child wanted in transgender issues." She proceeded to tell me this story, no names, no schools will be mentioned. She said that the little girl or child or teenager came to the teacher and told the teacher that her parents were giving her hate film crimes, waking her up in the middle of the night, trying to convince her to turn the other way. The teacher, being a professional, and also realizing she did not have a degree in psychology, immediately took the issue to the guidance counselor. The guidance counselor also realized that the issues were so deep with this particular student, she needed more help, and she called in my friend, the school psychologist. After several meetings, the school psychologist was able to get the parents to come to the school with the child, teenager, and have several meetings, and she was be- she was able to begin to mend the problems that lay between the parent and the child. And she was, they, both sides were able to reconcile somewhat with the help of a professional. This system, this particular system of action, from teacher to guidance counselor to social, to school psychologist, is what we need. Teachers are not psychologists, we are teachers. Now, I do under, I do sympathize with these kids and everything they've come through. I learned two things tonight. Number one, they're very sincere. And number two, their problems and their concerns are a lot deeper than changing policy. Several of them I noted mentioned suicide. If it's that serious, changing a policy is not going to help-
Thirty seconds.
-putting a Band-Aid on the problem. They need to think about what's going to happen in real life, when they're out of the safety of the school. What's going to happen with a real job? What's going to happen when they get into college? This is not going to go away. It's unfortunate, absolutely. But we are not responsible for solving the problem. They need professionals, and their parents might need professionals, too. This is out of our pay grade.
And that is time?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just want to do a time check. It is 8 o'clock, and we do have 10 more speakers, eight in person and two online.
So I suggest that we move on to our agenda item, our next agenda item, because 10 speakers is a lot. We've been here a long time, and there's a lot of our administrators and our staff have been here, and it's, I'd like to move forward, and then we'll come back to the speakers. Are we okay with that? I see heads shaking. Okay, thank you. So we're going to go on to our next agenda item, which is the information. And we'll start with A, interim financial statements for January 2023. Our presenter is Daniel Hopkins, the Director of Business Services. Welcome, Mr. Hopkins.
Yes, good evening. Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems.
We will be coming back. I'm sorry, you can continue.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Weems, School Board Members, Dr. Spence. As of January 31st, the overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. We received the House and Senate proposed amendments to the Fiscal Year 23 Direct Aid Budget on February 16th. I'm sure you're all aware of the error made by VOE and the Governor's Proposal. VOE should have reduced the state basic aid by a percentage of the grocery tax-held harmless funds we received. This error overstated the Governor's budget by $3.3 million for Fiscal Year 23 for us. The only change made by the House proposal was to reduce the state basic aid by $3.3 million by this amount. The Senate proposal holds us harmless from this mistake, so there would be no change from the original Governor's Proposed Amendment. Both the House and the Senate proposals are still increases from the original budget for this fiscal year. The House proposal is an increase of $1.4 million, and the Senate proposal is an increase of $4.7 million from the original budget for Fiscal Year 23. The General Assembly didn't approve the budget. We are now still, we're now waiting on the Governor to call a special session to approve the budget, and you'll be updated after final legislative action. Federal revenues are showing an acceptable trend at this time in the fiscal year. We have received impact aid payments of approximately $10 million. Other sources of revenue remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. The next graph shows that the sales tax receipts are at an acceptable level. Year-to-date through January, we were approximately $3.6 million higher than the same time last year. February sales tax is actually down from the previous year by $200,000. This is the first sign the sales tax might actually be slowing down. And the last graph shows that the expenditures and recoveries trend continues, remains to be acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. At this point, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Is there any questions? Seeing them, thank you.
Thank you.
So our next agenda item under information is the Policy Review Committee. Recommendations. Our presenter is Ms. Kamala Lynetti, our School Board Attorney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Kamala Lynetti, and on behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'll be bringing forward the recommendations from the February Policy Review Meeting. I will note for you, we did have some corrections. Mrs. Manning, who's our new chair for the PRC, pointed out some incorrect information that was in the package. We updated that package earlier today. That should be in your file, and then I'll try to note this if I can as I'm going along. We do have 16 policies, so I'll go through them as quickly as I can. Policy 2.1 is Management Plan Goals and Objectives. There are only Scrivener's changes recommended. There's one change in the first paragraph. That is the only recommendation we're making relevant to Policy 2.1. Are there any questions about Policy 2.1? Here are no questions on Policy 2.1. I will move on to Policy 2.2, which is Definitions. And I will go back. I'll note for you, Section 2 is the administrator section of the policy manual on here, so a lot of these are relevant. We're just going through our normal scheduled check for Policy 2. And again, Policy 2.2 is Definitions. It defines the term administrator. There are no recommended changes for Policy 2.2. Are there any questions on Policy 2.2? Here are no questions. I will move on to Policy 2.3. Policy 2.3 is one of the policies that we replaced earlier today to correct the language, as the Policy Review Committee voted on it. Policy 2.3 has to do with consultants on there, and the hiring of consultants. The change that we added to the file and the agenda as posted today, the new change will be the last paragraph, the last sentence, the first paragraph, which will read, "The Superintendent Destiny will provide a monthly report to the school board regarding consultants hired by this school division." There are no other changes recommended for that, that particular policy. Are there any questions on 2.3?
Ms. Anderson. Anderson.
Would you repeat what the changes are, because that's not what's written here?
Correct. You should be, you should have been given in your file an updated version of it. It's, it reads slightly different, so this should be one that would have come in earlier this morning, this afternoon. So first paragraph, last sentence, reads, "The Superintendent Destiny will provide a monthly report to the school board regarding consultants hired by this school division."
Thank you.
Any further questions?
We, administration would like a little clarification on the consultants in terms of, are we talking about consultants at the school level, the consultants at the division level, the consultants at a particular dollar amount? Because that's going to dictate the amount of effort it's going to take to publish that monthly. So we talked about a couple of things in the PRC, but I was a little unclear about what we ended up settling on in terms of, what are you looking for at the end of every month? Recognizing that the internal audit also has that information, so.
Ms. Manning.
Ms. Brown has her hand up. I'll defer to her. Go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Brown.
So I'm a little bit confused that this is coming up now, especially since we worked really hard with administration's input at the Policy Review Committee and voted on this. We had three eyes. It was unanimous to recommend. And it was just that, any consultant hired by the division's going to be included, and the monthly report that was discussed was the one that we already get in our email, and that was the conversation that was had at that time.
Ms. Manning.
Yeah, I concur. I mean, I don't think that we have that many outside consultants that it would cause a lot of work to provide us a monthly report. I had initially said that I wanted the school board to approve all of the outside consultants, and we came to an agreement that we would just require a report of them monthly.
Any more questions? Yes, Ms. Owens.
Sorry, Dr. Robertson's behind me. He's asking, is it any consultants? And I will clarify, I'm not, I'm not sure that, Dr. Robertson, I asked, do you already get a monthly report? I thought at PRC, we decided you didn't, you weren't getting a report, you would start a report. So, Ms. Brown, I don't think you currently get a report. I think the discussion at PRC was that you would get a report. I think what I'm hearing Dr. Robertson say behind me is, can you clarify what you mean by consultants? Yeah, I, I was at the PRC meeting also. I don't remember a discussion on this, but again, because this is the information agenda, this is the time period to clarify what it is you're looking for before we come back for consent or action at a later date. So now would be a good time to have this discussion.
I don't know, but can we move this back to the PRC for that discussion? So I make a motion to move this back to the PRC on March 9th.
We can, but let, Ms. Owens did raise her hand before, so can-
Sure, I was just trying to-
Yeah, you can, you can do the motion on the floor, and then we'll do discussion and let you speak, okay?
No, there's a second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Ms. Brown and seconded by Ms. Anderson. All in favor, please raise your, no, is there any discussion on this? Okay, Ms. Owens.
And I guess it can be decided in PRC, but when it comes back, I'd like to know just kind of what is supposed to be in the report. Is it just a running total of who was a consultant that month and what their role was? And that's going to include everything from tutors that came into schools, or what qualifies as an actual consultant? Is it that if you use an organization, are you just doing it broad? We had, I know, communities and schools, not the organization, but communities and schools came in and provided this many hours of tutoring. Is it broad, like the organization, or are we looking for itemized names of people? Kind of, what kind of report are we expecting?
Ms. Anderson.
So at our meeting, we talked about this a little bit, and we, at the time, I believe Dr. Robertson said that sometimes principals call in speakers to speak, you know, to a class, because they're the experts on something, so that would be considered a consultant. I don't think tutoring was considered part of it, but, you know, I guess that's why I think maybe we should go ahead and send this back to policy, and let's clarify everything exactly as it's supposed to be before we vote on it.
Ms. Manning, did you want to speak?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay, how about you, Ms. Martin, still?
Yeah, I would just be curious if any graduate students or PhD students doing research with our school surveys, anything like that, who would share their research with us, would also be counted as consultants? We'd want to define that as well.
Okay. So we will be bringing Policy 2.3 back to the PRC Committee for your next meeting to clarify who the consultants would include.
Excuse me, do we need to vote, or is this just our recommendation?
Usually you don't vote on this. Usually, the information, you just tell us-
Right. Yeah, this is just information.
Are we ready to move on to Policy 2-5? Policy 2-5 is titled Superintendent Qualification. There is one scrivener change in the second to last word in that sentence and a couple formatting changes in the legal references. Other than that, there are no recommended other changes to Policy 2-5. Are there any questions? Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, something else that was missed that we did vote on in our meeting that, and it's just a grammar, uppercase S on Superintendent.
No, no, it's not. You took the last word.
Yeah.
Yes, I see it. I'll have that corrected for the consent package. Hearing no further questions on Policy 2-5, I'll move on to Policy 2-6. Policy 2-6 is Superintendent Recruitment Selection Process. The only changes recommended here were scrivener changes and changing them to Chairman to Chair, capitalize that, and some grammatical changes in the legal references. Are there any questions about Policy 2-6? Hearing no questions on Policy 2-6, I will move on to Policy 2-7. Policy 2-7 is Superintendent Appointment, Term of Office, Oath, and Compensation. There are no recommended changes for this policy, so this will just be marked as reviewed by the School Board. Any questions on Policy 2-7? Hearing no questions on Policy 2-7, I will move on to Policy 2-8, which is Superintendent Powers, Duties, and Responsibilities. There are no recommended changes to this policy either, so this would be marked as reviewed by the School Board. Any questions on Policy 2-8? Hearing no questions on Policy 2-8, I will move on to Policy 2-9, which is Superintendent Evaluation. There are no recommended changes to this policy, so therefore this will also be marked as reviewed by the School Board. Hearing no questions on 2-9, I will then move on to 2-10. 2-10 is Superintendent Vacancy in Office, Acting Superintendent, Fines, Suspension, Separation, Conditions of Employment. There are only scrivener changes that you'll see throughout, which are basically grammatical changes and a couple of grammatical changes in the legal references. Other than that, there are no other recommended changes to Policy 2-10. Were there any questions on Policy 2-10?
Got one quick question. So the timelines through here, 60 days, 120 days, and 180 days, others all defined in state law, is that right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
That's it.
Are there any other questions on 2-10? Hearing no questions, other questions on 2-10, I will move on to Policy 2-13, which is Job Descriptions. And there is a change, this should be one of the policies that would have been updated this afternoon. In the first paragraph, the last sentence, it reads, before corrected, as the job description should be available to the staff. The PRC is recommending that it will now read, "The job description should be available to the staff," and should be to the public, saying that, "to the public." These job descriptions are on our website on there. This will not be any changed practice, it'll just reflect it in the policy. The job, all job descriptions are available on the VB Schools website, but the added words would be "and" to the public. Are there any questions on 2-13? Hearing no questions on 2-13, we'll move on to Policy 2-14, which is Organizational Structure. There are no recommended changes to Policy 2-14, therefore this would all still be marked as reviewed by the School Board. Any questions on 2-14? Hearing no questions on 2-14, I will move on to Policy 2-19, which is Administrative Action in Absence of Policy. There are no recommended changes to this policy either, so therefore this policy will be marked as reviewed by School Board. Are there no questions? Hearing no questions on 2-19, I will move on to 2-20. Title of this policy is Review of Administrative Decision, Decisions, Board Requests of Administrators. There are no recommended changes to this policy either, so this would be marked as reviewed by the School Board. Any questions on Policy 2-20? Hearing no questions on Policy 2-20, we move on to Policy 2-33. This is Coordinators, Title IX, Section 504 and ADA. I will note that when it came before the Policy Review Committee, we had recommended some scrivener's changes, which was basically removing the editor's notes. Afterwards, we got input from the CAC representative, when the CAC representative, that they suggested remove the terms, the term handicap discrimination, that's not currently handicapped discrimination. And we went ahead and recommended that the change should now read, "Section 504, Discrimination of Individuals with Disabilities," rather than use the term handicapped termination. We believe that was a minor change that PRC didn't see, but that is generally the preferred term at this point, rather than handicap. With that recommendation, the only other, with that change, the only recommendation to remove is the editor's notes from that. Are there any questions on Policy 2-33 as amended? All right, so we're going to move on to Policy 529, which is Awards for Achievement, Class Rank, Honor Designations. There were some significant changes in this particular policy. The first change shows up in D, which is Honor Designations. Recommendation for PRC is to remove the first sentence, beginning with the ninth grade cohort of students, class of 2022 entering high school in the fall of 2018. Class rank will no longer be reported on the student's transcript or published by the School Board. That sentence is being recommended to be pulled out. Longer sentence follows after that, which there will be some recommended language I will read to you. Each high school will be provided with, remove, grade point averages for class rank of individual colleges, universities, scholarships, and military applicants that require this information. And here's another added change, or that is requested by a parent, legal guardian, or adult student. There's a minor change in the next sentence, which will be, "The principal or the school designated shall also provide colleges and universities with an exponential Latin honor system through the VB CPS school, public schools, transfer file." Under the next section, the next section is marked as I, "A student's grade point average will be computed for the following purposes." Under Section D, it would now read, "To determine the class," and I think that's spelling error, "to determine the class rank of individual students," and E, "to determine the valedictorians and salutatorians for the graduating class." So those would be additions to Section 1. Section 2 will now be marked, "Beginning in the school year 2023-24," comma, and will follow, "The following honor designations will be utilized to distinguish academic achievement for graduating seniors." Under subsection A, which currently is, "A student earning a 3.0 cumulative grade point average or higher," and average or higher will be considered an honor grad. The recommended change is that a student earning a 3.25 cumulative grade point average or higher will be considered for an honor graduate. If you go down then to Section 3, it reads, "The designation of valedictorian, salutatorian," now this is where the changes will start. The designation of valedictorian, salutatorian will be utilized and will now add a new sentence that will say, "To be eligible for valedictorian, salutatorian, student must complete the last four consecutive semesters enrolled in the high school." The following sentence, paragraph will now be added. For those schools with specialty academies, the superintendent is also authorized to permit a valedictorian, salutatorian for each academy and advanced academic program within the comprehensive program. Then we will be removing the rest of the language.
Okay, are there, excuse me, are there any questions? I have several people. First, Ms. Melnick, and then Ms. Owens, and then Ms. Anderson.
All right, two questions. How did this, okay, how did this come up?
It was brought by one of the PRC members. I think the chair can address this.
Okay, well, I brought it forward.
Okay, Ms. Manning.
So we, I'm still speaking. We have over 700 policies, some that have not been reviewed in a decade or more, and this was a policy that went through in 2021 and, well, reviewed back in 2021, but it took a long time for us to get to the point where this was implemented and this was a long, arduous process that first started with students coming forward to talk about this. We've already been through this, so I'm not sure, of all the policies we have, I heard HR has a whole list, why those aren't up for review and why we're doing this again. I'm really confused by this and this is really disappointing.
As is the policy per the Policy Review Committee, while we have a schedule of policies that we bring forward, anyone can suggest to the Chair of the Policy Review Committee that can be added to the agenda.
But we typically know about those things in advance, not just, I mean, you email the board and you share that information with the board, like, I would like this to be brought forth to the Policy Review Committee. Not just an arbitrary add of a policy.
The procedure is to ask the Chair of the Policy Review Committee to add it to the agenda or bring it up during new business, and that is what happened at the February Policy.
You're just saying that the Chair of the Policy Committee brought this forward herself.
Okay.
Which is acceptable.
All right, thank you.
Before we continue, I'm going to ask the person that's standing to please sit down. You are blocking the view of the people behind you. Thank you. There's somebody right behind you. I need you, thank you. You need to sit down, please.
Should I sit down?
Yes, please sit down. You, yes.
Do you need me to sit down?
I want you to sit down.
Address me now?
No.
Okay.
I just need you to sit down. If you can't do that, I'd ask you to leave.
You're asking me to leave? I won't sit for this. One of the disrespects you show in trans students.
Okay, our next person is Ms. Owens.
I have a couple of questions about, I guess, the decisions or the process behind some of these changes. I guess, starting with number three, where it has the designation of valedictorian and salutatorian will be utilized to, eligible for balance out, that the student must complete the last four consecutive semesters enrolled in the high school. I want to make sure that that is meaning in that specific high school. So we are writing in here in our policy that we are going to exclude military families and transient families from being able to partake in this situation that we are adding because of their moving situations. They aren't going to be eligible regardless of their grade point average or whatever work they've put in. I just want to make sure I understand before I'm asked to vote on that.
Ms. Riggs, would you like me to respond? Would you like me to respond?
Okay.
Yes, please.
So this was language that was originally in the previous policy, and I think the idea behind it is to ensure perhaps students who are coming from private schools or other schools that have not been enrolled in the school, just for fairness. I understand your point about military students and that's something that we could consider. You know, I would be willing to consider a change of language in that if you would like to propose something.
And, you know.
Ms. Owens has not finished.
I know, but this is responding to another reason why this language was put in there.
Okay, go ahead.
So in the past, we had students who went to, who were part of an academy where they had weighted classes, and when they discovered that they weren't about to be the valedictorian or the salutatorian at their school, they transferred back to their home school and had outlandish grade point averages that no one in that particular school could possibly have made, i.e., like, one particular student in general went back to Kellum, where they don't have an academy. That student eventually, she became the valedictorian because she had a grade point average that no one at Kellum could possibly have because they didn't have the weighted classes at Kellum. So I let this last four consecutive semesters slide because of what had happened, and there had been problems all along with the fact that we had, you know, academies and students who are not in the academy. So that's why that language is in there, one of the reasons it's in there.
And I think it illustrates one of the many reasons why valedictorian, salutatorian may not fit well for our district if that is a possibility for students to transfer and that we're going to put something in policy to prevent that, that's going to have the unintended consequence of punishing military families or other families who had to move for any number of reasons while we are in this crisis level of financial state following a pandemic. So I would feel very uncomfortable adding that kind of language that is pretty much the opposite of inclusive to me. I also had a question about D, the honor designation part, and I guess maybe it's just wanting clarification on the first statement there. Each high school will be provided with grade point averages for a class rank for individual colleges. Is it, each high school is going to be provided with it, each high school student? I just want to make sure I understand what is being provided and to who.
A response?
Yeah, I think that's a typo there. It should say, "Each high school will provide..."
And then I guess taking out the word "with?"
Yes. "Each high school will provide grade point averages."
Okay, and they'll provide that to students or provide it for the colleges, universities, provide it to those people that are listed?
So if you read on down, it says, they would be requesting, "This is only provided upon request by a parent, guardian, or adult student." It's not automatically provided to the school.
Okay, so it's provided to the school and the student upon request?
Right, so it's provided to schools that require the information or that is requested by a parent, guardian, or adult student.
Okay.
Clarify one more thing.
Are you... I had one more.
Yes, okay.
On A, this is on number 2A, where we've changed the GPA for an honor graduate. I was curious kind of where that came from. Is there a certain college or a certain thing that you guys pulled that from?
So when you, you know, one of the reasons why we discuss this, and I'll just speak for myself, I won't speak for my other colleagues, but when I'm sitting in high school graduations and it's announced that 70% of the graduating class is an honor student, I felt that it diminished the, it diminished the award of being an honor graduate when, you know, you only have 30% of the students who aren't receiving anything. So that was the reason, you know, if you look at GPAs over the course of the years, GPAs are a whole lot higher now than they were in the past because of the advanced courses and the weighting. So that was the reason why it was suggested to increase it.
Okay, well, thank you, I guess, for the explanation. I would like to see our GPA changes for honors, if we are considering a change, be, have a basis in something academic more than our feelings at the graduation. I do understand, I've been in the graduations and I'm elated to see how many of our students are doing that well. I don't know that I could support it without having an academic root in something, and I don't necessarily like the idea of moving the goalposts because students are doing well, because there are many students who are not going to be seeking to take the weighted courses. We just had the presentation about CTE credits, and if those students achieved the 3.0 and did their CTE and other well-rounded classes, I don't want to take away from their ability to be an honor student because they achieved it. So I wouldn't be in support of that. I guess those are my three for now, and I will email any others.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, did you finish?
I would like to remove the 3.25 and go back to the 3.0 in this. I feel like the same thing, we just heard this afternoon, Ms. Manning, you weren't there, but we heard about the students who are in the classes that are able to earn certifications, and even though those classes are not weighted, those students go above and beyond to achieve certifications and, you know, they have to travel across town. I just feel like the 3.0 benefits those students very well, and I agree that we shouldn't change this goalpost. The 3.0 is still a B average, and I think that's above average. The 3.0 is still a B average, and I think that's above average. Most, you know, average is C. So this is, we're not saying that students who have Cs are going to be considered honor graduates. We're saying that they have a B average, and it gives them a leeway from 3.0 to 3.5 to, you know, to stay in the honors category. So I would personally prefer, and I voiced this in committee, but I was sort of outvoted on that. So, but I would like to see that go back to 3.0 if we could do that.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Okay, I'm going to approach each section separately. So Section 2A, the 3.25 for honors. I could support that starting in 2027 because we have students that are already in high school working on their GPA. That said, I looked at, you know, Virginia State is 3.0 for cum laude, VCU 3.3, ODU 3.4, Tech 3.4, GMU 3.5, JMU 3.5, and UVA 3.4. So we're, you know, going to 3.5 is we're in line with that, but that should not start, I think, until 2027 when the eighth graders, I mean, when the next class of student comes in, when it's a fresh start in four years. The other thing I want to talk about is AP classes and weighted grade point average. Are dual enrollment classes weighted when they come back into the high school?
I asked that this afternoon. I'm sorry. I did ask that question this afternoon, and we were told no. They get college credit for dual enrollment, but they do not get-
So if they're taking dual enrollment, English 9 through TCC as College Comp 1, that's not coming in as a weighted GPA?
No.
Okay, so I can't support this until we address the dual enrollment piece. I am not someone who supported AP classes for my student because everything rides on a single exam. I can, you know, my student can get a B at TCC and still get the college credit. So I think we need to address the dual enrollment piece. There's also concurrent enrollment that we don't even address. These are credits that they take at the college, they don't even come back to high school, that we need to take a look at as well, as well as those CTE career and technical education classes and how those are weighted. And then Section 3, on the last four consecutive semesters, as I shared earlier, I had to move a lot due to housing insecurity as a child. We could have a student who remains in VB CPS but has to change high schools. Why wouldn't we at least make this, they remain at least, you know, four semesters in our system rather than maybe transferring in from Norfolk or transferring in from another city? And then I'm really concerned about students who are forced to move within the district but to a different school being disqualified from this process as a result of a custody issue or the death of a parent, something totally out of their control. So I would like to see that sort of readdressed in whatever final policy comes across. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melnick?
Okay, so under honor designations, I am positive that that, we talked about that in the beginning, that that information is always available to anyone who asks. So the fact that that has come back in here, I don't know why that's there. That's always been, we talked specifically about service academies and that they're about the only group that asks for class rank and not a percentile. And that we were told, I remember Mr. Keever saying, that is absolutely, a parent wants to know, a services academy wants to know, anybody that needs to know for whatever reason can have that information. The second one that's also disappointing to me is 2.4, that the superintendent is also authorized to permit a valedictorian, salutatorian for each academy and advanced academic program within the comprehensive school. So is that splitting the schools, having two valedictorians and two salutatorians? Is that what this is saying?
Splitting it, I think you're doubling up at a school that has-
So you have one for each school?
But according to the principals that came and spoke, and there were plenty of them, that, they asked us not to do that. And this is another case where while the board has, this is clearly a board decision, but the people who work in these schools come and speak to us and they tell us what is important to them. And that was a hot topic with the principals, and they asked for that not to happen. It is already difficult enough to be the principal at a high school that has two different programs simultaneously every day. And the division that occurs naturally, but then to create that on top of it, to give them more to create division within these schools is terrible. And they asked us not to do that. And again, this is the third time one policy has come forward since, this is the third time since 2018. This was a lot of work done by this division. And I'd also like to say that, and just remind people, that the Latin honor system honors students appropriately. In the past, if you were 3.0 or above, you were an honor grad, and that was it. That was it. Now we have these Latin distinctions that are really important. But the reason this whole thing started is colleges aren't asking for that anymore. They're not asking for class ranks. And we in Virginia Beach have created schools where it is impossible for a student to be number one or number two in their class unless they are in an academy. Sorry, Mrs. Smith, who lives in Princess Anne High School, and your student is a straight A student taking all AP classes. Your child will not be probably in the top 50 or 60 in that class because your child graduating with a 4.4, amazing, wonderful, doesn't even come close to the valedictorian of that class who graduated with a 5.7 or 5.8. So unfortunately, this quest to make, people are making equity a dirty word. That's what it all comes down to. It's not a dirty word. We created this inequity in our schools, and the Latin honor system was the perfect way to honor all of our students properly.
Mrs. Melnick, I may want to remind you, when we looked at this policy a couple of years ago, and you'll understand because we're both parents who had children at the Governor's School for the Arts, there was a significant concern from the students from the Governor's School for the Arts. The Governor's School for the Arts is a regional program, so they're not based within one of our schools. Some of the discussion that Mrs. Owens and Mrs. Martin were talking about were also things that the Governor's School for the Arts had a concern for because they leave for half of the day and go in there. So some of these issues, that was an issue last time. You may be able to remember that and address some of those concerns, but that was some of the discussion the last time we did that, why that was a concern for them.
And that is something we talked about, that Governor's School students leave their schools at 12 o'clock. And we talked about this today with the CTE program, that this is a group of students that start school, get home at 8 o'clock at night. They're part of professional performances with equity actors from New York here in Virginia Beach through their own Governor's School program, through Virginia Musical Theater and beyond. And these are students who give up the opportunity to take other weighted classes to leave, to go to the Governor's School to a non-weighted program. And so, I mean, I just really, I really do not understand how this came back up. We got very little push, very little pushback from parents. As a matter of fact, I don't think this past year we heard a single word from anybody. Our students were beautifully recognized. Many schools, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Spence, the valedictorian and salutatorian were on the stage for their graduations. But this was not done arbitrarily. This is across the country, these things are happening. But specifically to Virginia Beach, we created these programs that have made it impossible for perfect students to be number one or number two in their class if they're not in the academies that we created. And to be fair, use the Latin honor system, magna cum laude, summa cum laude. That's amazing, and that's what you're going to hear at the collegiate level also.
Really quick, I just want to add the fact that if you have the two different schools, like it specifies in the rewriting of this policy, you're going to have, let's say you have Cumminsville High School, and you've got your entrepreneur, entrepreneur business academy student up there that is the valedictorian, salutatorian, and you also have your regular school, Cumminsville High School. You're going to have two standing up there, and they announce what their grade point average is. And you're going to have a grade point averages way up there, and then you're going to have another one right beside it that's like a 4.0 or 4.1, and everybody's going to like, because they don't explain that. People don't understand. They're like, how did that person become the valedictorian when that one has a 5.3? So you're putting them up there, and that's kind of like comparing them up there. And that's another difficult thing that we have to think about, too, that we put our students in. So I just wanted to point that out because that's something that will happen as well. Okay, Mr. Culpepper?
Well, I think I'll just start by saying, you know, I support the concept of valedictorian. For the same reason I could go kind of either way on 2A, you know, whether honor starts at 3.0 or 3.25. Valedictorian, in my view, exists to be a goal, you know, something to achieve that motivates people to do well. It's a good thing.
Speak up, please. Because they can't hear you out there. We can, but they can't.
I'll lean in closer.
Thank you.
And that's a good thing, to have something to be motivated to achieve. And like I say, in 2A there, where it's 3.0 or 3.25, as we're debating, I could go either way on that one for the same reason because for a lot of people, a 3.0 is a laudable goal and something that they should work hard to achieve. In fact, I keep thinking about a discipline hearing we had the other day, you know, where a guy was right on the cusp of that, and it was a point of discussion. So, I mean, it was a point of discussion that was something that motivated him, and I think that was important for him. So anyway, I could go either way on that. But like I say, I support valedictorian for the same reason. There are very good points made here about how to find the right balance in honoring somebody. And it kind of tempts me to tell a story, but it'd take me too long. But the short answer is, is, you know, generally speaking, when you look at a group of people who are achieving, it's not hard to pick out who is doing it, generally speaking. You know, in my high school, for example, we didn't have weighted. We did have AP courses, but there wasn't any weight. It was a 4.0, and that was it when I was in high school, however long ago that was. But they, the person who was the valedictorian took all those AP courses. Took all the hardest classes we had, was still the valedictorian of our school, hands down, despite the fact a lot of other people didn't take any of those courses. And that doesn't necessarily apply to the particular case we're talking about here other than to point out that it's often going to be those same people, no matter how you measure it. And I think what we're looking at here that we need to find maybe is the best way to measure it that we can all find reasonable, and there's not going to be a perfect answer to that, it just can't be. But recognizing somebody who has achieved is worth it, I think, to try to find a way to do that. The only other thing I'd say here is, you know, the language here that references more than one valedictorian, salutatorian for schools that have multiple programs doesn't require it. It offers it something the superintendent can do. And I would certainly expect that the superintendent would do that in coordination with a principal of that school and look at their specific programs and what would be best to find a path there. I don't know how to write that. I think we were already in agreement that we need to look at this in some more detail to determine if there's a best way to write it.
Thank you. Ms. Manning?
Thank you. Okay, so regarding how this topic got brought up years ago, was, we got some emails from some students, I think it was Princess Anne High School. And they were concerned, they weren't in the IB program, and they were concerned that they were not being recognized. They couldn't compete with the IB program, and they wanted to have an opportunity to have valedictorian, salutatorian. That's what was brought to us. Originally, it was brought to us, please let us have two at this school. And that changed into, we eliminated it. When we were discussing this, we put out a survey. And 74% of all the parents said, keep valedictorian and salutatorian along with the Latin honor system. They did not want to get rid of valedictorian, salutatorian. And in this policy, the Latin honor system remains. I agree that it's a good system. Regarding class rank, I'm the parent of two students that have just gone through the college application process in the last two years. And I can tell you, there were multiple times that my son was required to have his class rank. And I can tell you, it was very difficult for me to get it. Because under the current policy, it is not to be provided. You're only to provide a percentile rating. Schools, whether it be military academies, a lot of coaches require it. If you're a recruited athlete, they want to see your class rank. And when you fill out that form, that's your first line to try to get in with the coach. It is mandatory to fill in that class rank. You know, we give out Teacher of the Year, Superintendent of the Year. I just can't imagine why we wouldn't want to give out the valedictorian and salutatorian to honor those students who've worked so hard. I know students that it's a motivator for them to take those harder courses and to try to gain that award, a valedictorian, salutatorian. It's a motivator for them to take those harder courses. Regarding the weighting, I agree that we should probably look at that weighting system again, but that's not this policy. There's another policy that addresses weighting. And if someone wants to make a suggestion on what that should be, I'd be happy to bring it forward to the Policy Committee to review. Regarding the process by which policies come before the school board and the Policy Review Committee, there are a couple of ways it can be brought directly to the school board to be heard, according to our bylaws. It can also be brought to the Policy Review Committee. And I remember a number of times of times during COVID that bylaws were brought back to the school board multiple times in just one year. And, you know, for example, on the process by which speakers come before us, how long speakers can talk, putting the student speakers before the parent speakers. That bylaw came before us several times in just one year. So this isn't something that's, you know, an anomaly. We as school board members have the right and the ability to bring policies forward. And if, you know, I welcome, if you want a policy brought to Policy Review Committee, please let me know. Let me know your suggestions. I'd be happy to put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Actually, it was 2017. We had a student who came and spoke to us from Princess Anne High School. I remember. Actually, I wrote his name. I have it in my notes. The student who came and spoke to us, and then several students followed him in the next meeting. And they were right in that they were zoned for that school. They didn't have a choice to go to another school. They were zoned for that school. They were straight A students and also took honors classes and AP classes and got some weighted, you know, ability for some of those classes. But no matter what, a 4.7 didn't even come close to a 5.6. So they were right in that they didn't stand a chance to be valedictorian of their school or salutatorian either. So we took a look at it, and we labored on this. We didn't just pass this in one night. We didn't just pass this in one night. We studied it, we did research, we sent out surveys, as Ms. Manning pointed out. 77% of the parents that we surveyed also said they wanted us to go to the Latin honor system. It was confusing on the survey, because in the same survey, then they said, as we move to the Latin honor system, do you still want valedictorian? And that's where they said, 70% said, yes, keep valedictorian and salutatorian, okay? So the point I'm making that is that in a school where you have students who are zoned for that school, and they're not part of the academy, but they are taking AP courses, and they're doing above and beyond, but they're not allowed to take the weighted courses that the academy students are taking. They're not allowed to. Only the academy students can take those highly weighted classes. So it really puts those students who are zoned for that school at an inherent disadvantage. They just, they can't, there's no way they could possibly. So knowing this, I actually brought it up in committee and said, well, then maybe if we're going to bring it back, if we're going to bring back valedictorian and salutatorian, then we probably ought to take into consideration that we should have two, even though there may be somebody on stage who's going to have a 5.6 or a 5.8, and the other valedictorian's only going to have a 4.7. But it still gives them the title, which apparently that's important to people. It's not important to me, because I probably would never have come close to that to begin with, but, you know, there are people out there who want the title to go along with their summa cum laude, okay? And so, but we studied this, we studied a lot, and a lot of school systems around the country, almost 60% have given up, if you look around the country, have given up ranking and valedictorian and salutatorian. We did a lot of research on this in 2017, 2018. And so we came to the conclusion at that time to give up the ranking because of the fact that, you know, oh, and by the way, if we continue doing ranking, we actually need two ranking systems. We need one for the academy and a ranking system for the students in that school who are not a part of the academy. Because a kid who has a 4.7 could be ranked 50, 54, you know, out of a class of 390, they could be 54, and that doesn't look good either. Wow, you're only 54? Wow, you know. So I realize that colleges look at our weighted system, they look at Virginia Beach, and they know we have a weighted system in our academies, and so they look at that. But, you know, a student shouldn't feel like they're being penalized just because they chose to not be a part of the academy and yet they're zoned for that school. So being that we only have Kellum and Cox, who do not have academies, all the other high schools do have academies with weighted classes. My suggestion on this is that we clean up the language, that we go back to committee with this, and that our colleagues can email their suggestions to us. That's just my suggestion right now, I don't know if you all agree to that or not, and that we bring this back another time after we've cleaned this up. And you all have given more input through emails to the chair and maybe to all the members of the policy committee. And then we could bring it back and have a discussion on it within the next, because I think we meet pretty soon. I think it's within the next week that we'll be meeting, and we could clean this up and bring it back with a cleaner copy. What do you all think? Any objection?
Ms. Manning, I believe our next meeting is the ninth, so you would need to be prior to that, the comments prior to that time period, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm happy to bring it back to policy review and consider all the comments. If you have any other input, please, if you could get it to us before the March 9th meeting, that would be great. Thank you.
So if you do have any comments, just send it to the entire policy review committee, so just put everybody's name on that and send it. Okay? Thanks so much.
All right, you're not quite done? Almost done. Last policy is 749, organizations eligible to use facilities. There are some minor changes, basically scrivenor changes, but under section C, we changed the name, one of the laws that went through required that you make facilities available to Girl Scouts in addition to Boy Scouts. Boy Scouts have always been required, there's a separate law that applies to allowing Boy Scouts in. If you're not familiar with it, Boy Scouts are actually chartered by outside organizations, Girl Scouts are actually chartered by the United States Congress on there, and Girl Scouts weren't specifically included in groups that were authorized to use the organizations. A law was passed that we needed to update to make sure that they were included. We also changed the name, Boy Scouting has gone through a number of changes in the last couple of years, and the actual official name is Scouting BSA. So the recommendations in section C is to change it to Scouting BSA slash Girl Scouts and then other patriotic youth organizations, and these organizations are authorized to use facilities. This was not a situation where Girl Scouts was not authorized to use, it was simply not stated, and since the law has changed, we put it in there. The other recommendation is to remove the editor's notes, which we standardly be doing with our policies, and those are the only recommendations for changes under policy 749. Are there any questions on 749? Mr. Culpepper?
Is that correction in B1, is that there, or is that not there?
Did I forgot to flip?
It looks like the original is correct to me. Annually with a semicolon after it is correct.
Oh, you know, you're right, I'm missing a page. Oh, goodness, yes, sir. If there are no questions, we will be done at this point. I will work with Mrs. Manning to take those policies back to the policy review committee.
Now we are back to our, returning to our public comments, and I will turn it over to our clerk, Ms. Tony Ado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next speaker will be Heather Sype, then Matthew Cody Connor, and then Gary Richards.
Good evening, Madam Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, school board members, and Dr. Spence.
Welcome.
My name is Heather Sype, and I am a parent of a VBCPS student, a VBCPS teacher, and a VBEA member. I am speaking this evening to urge you all to ensure your vote on the superintendent's estimate of needs and proposed budget aligns with the goals and objectives set forth by the board regarding compensation. With a master's degree and 21 years of experience here in VBCPS, my salary is equivalent to the state average. Average. Our division doesn't pride itself on offering an average education to students. Highly qualified individuals don't seek out average employment. If we aren't boasting about how VBCPS students and staff are average, then why is it acceptable for our salaries to be merely average? And this is only if we look at Virginia. If we look at the national average, we are woefully below average. All VBCPS employees deserve to have competitive wages and benefits. Our support professionals should not have to work three jobs because they don't earn a living wage working for VBCPS. Educators should not have to question if they can afford to seek medical attention because the bill they receive after insurance for one short ER visit is more than their monthly take-home salary. Our division must do better. This division is not average. Our educators are not average. Our goal is not to ensure all students reach average potential. This division prides itself on excellence and ensuring our students are taught by highly qualified educators. It's time to do what's right for the employees of VBCPS to ensure our division retains the employees that have made the division what it is. But it's not enough to simply do what's right here. I challenge you, as elected officials of the VBCPS school board, to be champions of this change when it's time for the Virginia Beach City Council to decide what funding we receive. Do not
30 seconds.
pass what's right here and pass it on. You need to be proactive, you need to have those conversations, you need to ensure the city council does what's right by the educators and the students that you were elected to serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Cody Connor, then Gary Richards, then Beth LeBar.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here once again to speak against Governor Youngkin's model school policies. We've been at this for months. We've been at this for months. And I'm not sure why, I mean, I know why I'm here. I know why I wrote this speech. I don't know why I'm trying to convince a school board to not implement policies that target vulnerable students and harm them. Our trans students are not a problem. This is a solution looking for a problem. Our trans students are not a problem. Teacher shortages, we have teacher shortages, bullying. How many of your students come to school hungry because their parents can't afford a carton of eggs anymore? Those are problems. I read the news, I know that the legislature of Virginia has already shot down all 12 bills that were introduced this year, and I think it's time the school board follows suit and says this isn't who we are. That we won't do any policies that put any kids at risk. Trans kids aren't a threat, trans people aren't a threat. My beautiful child is not a threat to anybody. But there's guns in our schools. There's people shooting up schools across the country, there's guns in our schools, there's guns in our schools in the hands of six-year-olds. That's a threat. Not our trans students. Tell lawmakers like Governor Youngkin, who have made up a problem to take away from the fact that they can't solve the real problems we actually have, this isn't who we are. Solve real problems and leave our trans kids alone.
Our next speaker is Gary Richards, then Beth LeBar, then Diana Howard.
I want to thank you guys for your service to our community. I think your efforts are reflected in the quality of our schools in Virginia Beach, and it makes our community a great place to raise a family. So I sincerely thank you, and especially after the ordeal you've gone through tonight. I've raised four adult kids that are educated here in Virginia Beach. Three of them have gone on to college, and they've started their careers and are successful. The fourth is my youngest, he's a freshman at ODU, and the jury's still out on him. But he graduated last year from Salem High School, which is more than his dad did, so he's got me beat, I can't criticize him too much. Took an interest in attending school board meetings last year, and I recognize many of y'all from that ordeal. It wasn't a typical year last year. There were not a lot of discussions about bake sales or teacher awards. We're at the end of COVID, and I don't have to remind you how difficult that was. So that's, when I went to the first school board meeting, it was because I was interested in a local issue. I wanted to hear the discussion in the chamber and to observe the decision-making process. So when I came to the door where the meeting was going to be held, it was locked. And there was a posted note that told me that the meeting had been canceled. That upset me, needless to say. That's how my experience started with school board meetings, and from that point throughout the rest of the year, it just got worse. And those of you who lived it know that. And that's why I think you enacted a lot of bylaws, some of which were aimed at
30 seconds.
protests and that were going on there. And I support the bylaws, I think they're a good thing. But I'd like you to ask one thing, add one thing to it, is consider accountability. Without accountability, we're lost. And when you think about me, I want you to think of that posted note, and think about our time and
And that is time.
the effort that we put in to attend these meetings.
And that is time.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Beth LeBar, and Diana Howard, and then Don LeBar. Beth LeBar. Diana Howard.
Hi, everybody, I'm Diana Howard, I'm the chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and we are concerned about the high cost of the schools that you wanted to build with the PPEA process. Those schools were way expensive before you were considering the PPA process, and then you even increased the cost of them by $100 million. And I was watching the informal session, and you were talking about this thing that they can't exceed this inflated cost that you have already of almost a half a billion dollars, and it's not to exceed that, and the other higher cost was 200 million higher than even that. So I don't see how this is saving us money, right? I don't know that we need to, like, build more schools. We used to have like 90,000 schools. School enrollment has gone down, we're now at 65,000 schools. So why are we building Taj Mahals? I mean, some of these schools that we've built with atriums and trees growing through the middle and so much glass, if you had an active shooter thing, you couldn't hide, right? They're ridiculous. And they just cost more money, right? So we just need construction of schools that will last. Just because something's old doesn't mean it isn't good, right? So cannot any of these schools be refurbished? Can we not make sure that we keep our buildings in good repair, right? I don't know what's wrong with some of these buildings, maybe they do need to be replaced, maybe they're crumbling down in our schools, our children shouldn't be in these schools. But these costs have got to come down. This is unbelievable, and we should have one, like, design for a high school and just do that in several places instead of spending $15 million for three schools for a design, and then what do we do? Throw it away? Design a school and pay for that design and then throw that away? Why can't it be used for several different schools? You know, it doesn't really make any sense, we're wasting money. And we don't have money to waste. Some of the problems, you know, it's like a teacher
30 seconds.
Yeah. Buildings do not educate, teachers do. Maybe we should concentrate on some of the policies and then look at ways to save money on schools so that we can put it where we really need it, okay? Thanks.
Our next speaker is Don LeBar, and then Latasha Tinsley. Don LeBar. Latasha Tinsley.
Thank you, board members. Good evening, school board members. It has come to my attention that the Satanic Club is going to be implemented in the schools. The problem is, this is the same Satan that is killing our families, causing them to be depressed, causing them to kill themselves, the same Satan that causing them to kill themselves, the same Satan that inflicts us with sickness and cancer and other diseases. The same Satan that has these children confused about their identity and who they are and who God has made them to be. And the same Satan that puts hatred in people's hearts to kill one another as the six-year-old shot the child, the teacher. But we want to put this in our schools for our children. When kids are already bringing guns to school, what fellowship had the light with the darkness? Who is going to stand up for these children? We are setting these children up for failure. And just because the world is doing it doesn't mean it's okay. We are in the world, but we are not of it. We are not to be followers of this world. This world, hallelujah, God is not pleased with this. And we have removed the ordinance of God and provoked him to anger. This surely is the last in evil days where the devil, Satan, Lucifer, himself is running rampant. Do not be deceived. There is a God in heaven, and we will have to give an account for every deed done in the flesh. We have to go back and repent because Jesus is soon to return. We cannot allow this in our schools. We cannot allow the enemy to come in and take our children, their minds, and, and control them. As you see, there is a movement happening, and it's all against God and what he already put in place. Do not bow down to the gods of this world, but follow the true and living God. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're going to move to our online speakers. Dan Chang, please unmute.
Welcome.
Hello?
Go ahead, Mr. Chan.
Okay, let me just make sure you can hear me. Okay, I am speaking tonight to oppose the proposed interim agreement to the SB Ballard Construction Company. I do not know the contractual details of the unsolicited proposal submitted by Ballard. But as I have stated in my previous remarks at school board meetings last year, unsolicited proposals submitted by contracts, contractors are not out of the goodness of the hearts. There are no free lunches. It has been discussed by previous speakers about the cost of additional, an additional 50% increase in square footage for Princess Anne High School and the lack of requirements for this increase in size of this high school. The proposed interim agreement with SB Ballard is to complete advanced design for the projects of Princess Anne High School, Betty F. Williams, Betty F. Williams, Bayside Sixth Grade and Bayside High School. If approved, the interim agreement will be effective for 12 months on a not succeed basis at a cost of 15.4 million. As a note, none of these projects are fully funded and will need funds from Virginia Beach City Council. In fact, the city council just recently sent this proposed interim agreement back to the school board for the review. This, in the CIP project sheets, these three schools have designs that were supposed to start last year in June and July at a cost of 27.9 million. Here are some questions that need to be answered before the proposed interim agreement for advanced design is approved. Has the cost of the design been lowered to 15.4 million? And will be starting the design seven, eight months late impact the completion dates of the project? Will the overall cost of the projects increase due to the delay in getting the design completed? Has the cost of money been factored into the budget requirements? What is the plan to get funding, to fully fund or program the revenue costs of these projects? There has been no funds appropriated for Bayside High School replacement project, no funds. Will the size of these schools be greatly scaled to a more reasonable square footage? Without answers to these questions, it will be fiscally, it will not be fiscally wise for the school board to approve this proposed interim agreement with SB Ballard and send it back to the city council for approval and funding. At the last school board meeting, Mr. Jack Freeman, the chief operating officer, spoke of multiple unsolicited proposals that had been rejected in steps to move forward with the ballot bid. This raises a question. Why did he and those involved in the decision to move forward with the ballot bid accept the 50% increase in the square footage as well as a long-term effect on the size that will have on operating inspection and expenses? This is, this has to be reviewed, and I emphasize again.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Paula Chang. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Um, speaking of accountability, as the gentleman did a couple of times before, it's great. And Mrs. Anderson, we didn't even coordinate. So my question is actually to Dr. Spence, who Dr. Spence is accountable for what happens in the Virginia Beach schools? I attended the recent Policy Review Committee meeting where three school board members developed the verbiage they wanted presented to the entire board for approval of bylaw changes. What was written by your administration following that meeting did not accurately reflect what the committee approved to be presented to this board. This has happened multiple times before. So I ask, do you require your staff to carry out their duties as directed by your superiors, the board? Next, for accountability, student behavior issues are finally seeing the light of day. So obviously, that you, Dr. Spence, had to speak to the media about violence. Yes, violence in our classrooms. A cynic might say this is a public relation move devised to stay ahead of what is finally being exposed and looks bad for the Virginia Beach schools. Biting teachers, throwing chairs, temper tantrums, threatening teachers on social media, which you tried to blame on COVID school closing and national trends. What matters is not national trends, but what is happening here in our schools. These are angry children who do not respect the authority figures in schools. And I ask, sir, do you hold yourself accountable for this? Do you recognize the accountability finally of the school board that closed the schools? Do the school board members recognize it? We have teachers who say behavior issues you claimed are recent have been long-term. Teachers state there is a required number of times they are accountable to correct disruptive students in class. If they don't correct themselves, teachers then call a resource officer and must fill out paperwork to have the child removed from class, often for just a brief period of time before returning to class, all during class time. Wonderful. So what has happened to teacher classroom authority under your watch? The disruptive student is removed from the class by a resource officer as if they are little criminals and are often put into solitary rooms. I've heard even some are padded while they quote unquote calm down, kind of like jail. Sometimes the classrooms are cleared, as you acknowledged, Dr. Spence. So I ask, what does this imprint upon the minds of these precious young people? What message do they receive about themselves? And what message is sent to these, to other students about these children? And I ask you all, what has gone wrong? Again, do you, Dr. Spence, hold yourself accountable for the fact that the discipline program does not serve the most needed students well? In your role as superintendent, you accepted the duty to assess and evaluate behavior policies. And this decline in the behavior has not appeared suddenly. It has appeared over time. When teachers are asked why they do not come forward to speak, they say it's because they fear retribution from your administration. They fear visits to their school from your senior staff to correct them. Who is responsible and accountable for this? Ultimately, Dr. Spence, you are not, you are responsible to the board who truly are the most accountable for what has gone wrong. They are responsible to hold your staff accountable to perform their duty.
And that is time. And Madam Chair, that was the last speaker for this evening.
Thank you. We're going to move on to 14, our consent agenda. We have under the consent agenda, A, five resolutions, the National Women's History Month, the V SBA Students and Schools in Challenging Environments, Fine Arts in Our Schools Month, National School Social Work Week, and Read Across America. We have B, Recommendation of the General Contractor Newcastle Elementary School Roof Replacement, and C, the Resolution for Opiate Settlement Class Action Suit. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent agenda items? If so, please identify any of the items that should be moved to the action agenda now. Hearing no call to move an item from the consent agenda, I call for a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion? Ms. Melnick, and do I have a second? Mr. Callen. We will vote on it after the resolutions are read. And we will start with the National Women's History Month is to be read by Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Chairman Riggs. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our school division, communities, and nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of our city and nation by providing the majority of the teaching force of the nation. Whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation that are still evident today. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has constantly, consistently been overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of March 2023 as National Women's History Month. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and recognize women in both the public and private sectors that provide healing and hope for the betterment of all throughout the community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Two, the V SBA Students and Schools in Challenging Environments to be read by Ms. Anderson.
Whereas challenging environments in schools have become an increasingly significant area of concern in the United States and Virginia. And whereas 50% of public school students qualify for subsidized meals. And whereas the code of the Commonwealth of Virginia, through the acts of the legislative, executive, and judicial branches, acknowledges geographical and local challenges with funding public education and seeks to remedy disparities across the state. And whereas we recognize that factors including, but not limited to disability, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status have a demonstrated history of impacting the educational opportunities provided to a student. And whereas the promise of public education is for every child to be successful in school and life. And whereas it is important for Virginia Beach families, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of the diverse needs and strengths of learners and to encourage discussion of the challenges and opportunities as a school community. And now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of March 2023 as V SBA Students and Schools in Challenging Environments Month. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to advocate and increase awareness about the supports necessary to improve Virginia Beach's challenged school environments. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this 28th day of February 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Three, Fine Arts in Our Schools Month to be read by Ms. Martin. That's what it has here. So was, did someone else get that? I'm sorry, Mr. Callen. By Mr. Callen. I am ready. No, you need to push your
I'm now on.
You're on now.
Whereas fine arts programs in Virginia Beach City Public Schools provide curricular, co-curricular, and extracurricular experiences in art, dance, music, and theater arts for all student members of the school community and for the Virginia Beach community at large. And whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach is cognizant of the importance of fine arts to all of our students, not only while they are in school, but also throughout their lives. Whereas art, dance, music, and theater arts are now and have been a vital part of the curriculum and the instruction of the public schools of Virginia Beach. And whereas the month of March has been designated as Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, and Theater in the Schools Month by their national associations. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach recognizes the month of March 2023 as Fine Arts in Our Schools Month in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach expresses its appreciation to our fine arts educators for enhancing our lives and the lives of our children through art, dance, music, and theater arts. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mr. Callen. Four, the National School Social Work Week is to be read by Ms. Jessica Owens.
All right, thank you. National School Social Work Week recognized March 5th through 11th, 2023. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers help identify and remove environmental barriers to learning, thus allowing students to reach their full potential. And whereas school social workers are committed to mobilizing family, school, and community resources to enable students to learn and fully benefit from their educational program. And whereas school social workers are valuable members of the multidisciplinary team serving schools, providing a wide range of services to students, parents, and staff. And whereas school social workers use their expertise in child development, community resources, mental health, and crisis intervention to develop and implement interventions to support educational success. And whereas school social workers assist the most vulnerable children and adolescents, including children with disabilities, children living in homelessness, children living in poverty, pregnant teens, suicidal teens, truants, and others at, or other at-risk children. And whereas this shared approach to assisting students promotes students' learning and helps guide students to high school graduation and post-secondary experiences and the skills necessary to be productive citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach recognized the second full week of March 2023 as National School Social Work Week in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this 28th day of February 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. And now we'll go to C. I've already mentioned B, Resolution for the Opiate Settlement Class Action Suit. Oh, I'm, I trying to get to the next one. Sorry, Read Across America. That's so important, too. Ms. Brown, I love that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas the citizens of Virginia Beach stand firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth grounded in the principle that education investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas National Education Association's Read Across America, a national celebration of reading on March 2nd, 2023, motivates students to read a variety of literature that are about everyone for everyone. Now therefore it be resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach calls on all the citizens of Virginia Beach to assure that every child is in a safe place reading together with a caring adult on March 2nd, 2023. And be it further resolved that this body enthusiastically endorses NEAs, Read Across America, and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities that improve the reading abilities of all children. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you so much. And I've already mentioned that the recommendation of the general contractor for the Newcastle Elementary. So that is part of the consent. So we'll go, move on to C, to the final resolution, which is the Opiate Settlement Class Action Suit. That Carolyn Weems was going to read, our vice chair, and she had an emergency. That Carolyn Weems was going to read, our Vice Chair, and she had an emergency, family emergency, right at the beginning of this meeting and had to leave. So we're asking Ms. Kim Melnick to read that, please.
Okay, so on behalf of Ms. Weems, the resolution approving participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Teva, Allergan, Walmart, CVS, Walgreens, and their related corporate entities, and directing counsel to execute the documents necessary to effectuate participation in the settlements. Whereas, the opioid epidemic that has cost thousands of human lives across the country also impacts the Commonwealth of Virginia and its political subdivisions by adversely impacting, amongst other things, the delivery of emergency medical, law enforcement, criminal justice, mental health, and substance abuse services, and other services. And whereas, the Commonwealth of Virginia and its political subdivisions have been required and will continue to be required to allocate substantial taxpayer dollars, resources, staff energy, and time to address the damage the opioid epidemic has caused and continues to cause the citizens of Virginia. And whereas, settlement proposals have been negotiated that will cause Teva, Allergan, Walmart, CVS, and Walgreens to pay billions of dollars nationwide to resolve opioid-related claims against them. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, approves the participation in the proposed settlement of the opioid-related claims against Teva, Allergan, Walmart, CVS, Walgreens, and their related corporate entities, and directs legal counsel and superintendent or designee to execute the documents necessary to effectuate participation in the settlements, including the required release of claims against settling entities, and that the superintendent or designee collaborate with the city manager or designee regarding use of settlement funding to address education regarding opioid use and addiction by students. Adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, this 28th day of February 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Melnick. Now, do any School Board members need to recuse themselves from the vote due to a possible conflict of interest or lack of impartiality? With no recusals, I call for a vote to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Now we are at the action part of our agenda number 15. This is the Personnel Report, Administrative Appointments. I call for a motion to approve the February 14th, 2023 Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, it should be the February 28th Personnel Report.
What did you say? Okay, so it... I'm sorry, it does have February 14th. It should say February 28th. I will fix that. Okay. Ms. Anderson made the motion. Do we have a second? Ms. Franklin.
Okay, before we move on to the vote, I have personal privilege by Mr. Culpepper. He would like to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I've abstained from this vote several times since I've been on the board. I've addressed the issues that I was requesting more information with the superintendent. He and his staff have given me some excellent feedback. So that's all been solved, and you guys probably saw in the previous one that came out that the way the report was written was different. I had some additional information on there that I asked him to put on there. In addition, if... I told him I don't need it every time, but if you have questions about specific appointments, there's more information available from HR.
Okay, thank you. So, I call for that... Is there any more discussion? With no recusals, are there no more recusals? Okay. I call for a vote to approve the February 28th, 2023 Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. I know, Dr. Smith, we did not have any appointments, right? Administrative appointments. Okay. And now we are on Governance Committee at-Large Seat Recommendation. I call for a motion to approve Jessica Owens as the additional School Board member on the Governance Committee. Do I have a motion? Ms. Beverly Anderson, do I have a second? Ms. Kim Melnick, is there any discussion? I call... This is for the Governance Committee at-Large Seat Recommendation that we talked about at the last meeting, and I asked for anybody to send me their interest in it, and Jessica was the only one that sent that. Okay? Is there any other questions or discussion? Okay. Do any School Board members need to recuse themselves from the vote due to a possible conflict of interest or lack of impartiality? With no recusals, I call for a vote to approve Jessica Owens as the additional School Board member on the Governance Committee. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Yeah, there is... I will remind you, there is a meeting tomorrow at 1 for the Governance Committee. Just in time. C, the PPEA Entrance Agreement. To open up the topic for discussion, I call for a motion to discuss the PPEA Entrance Agreement. Do I have a motion? Mr. Culpepper, do I have a second? Ms. Martin, because she had raised her hand. Is there... All right, let's go to our discussion. So if you have something you would like to say, please raise your hand. We're going to start with Ms. Franklin.
Okay.
Ms. Manning?
So I think you... Because I think I was the last speaker or when we wrapped up before our actual meeting. So I just wanted to clarify, and I didn't bring my notes from the workshop, but there were some questions because apparently the advantages of the PPA are the fact that we're going to save about 226 to something like that million because of the numbers that we saw for the design bid build were about 226 higher, which did include inflation you had mentioned. Not to mention, we're going to speed up the completion times for those three projects and save money that way. So, one of the things that I did have a question about was some concerns that we have heard from the public, and I just want... Would appreciate if you would address this, either Melissa or Mr. Freeman. But, you know, the Bayside project is the one that we're using for future builds, I guess, as a design. Okay? So that one is... And I don't have the numbers again in front of me, but it was like 191 million versus 170 million, or it was like 20 million higher. So can you just explain to the board and the public why we would use that Bayside design for future builds rather than the Princess Anne design?
I want to go right to the point first, and then there's a little bit broader. Right to the point, the reason why Bayside High School is projected in the CIP that you have in front of you at that cost is because the time of that, our ability to fund it, has shifted to the mid-30s. And as you saw in our recent presentations, the inflation rate compounds over time, so the cost per square foot is about double what it is in the mid-20s by the time we get to the mid-30s. So the concept, the question related to why are we using the more costly of the two buildings isn't really a fair comparison because they're 10 years apart and based on compounding inflation, it's going to be about double the cost.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the design. It has more to do with the fact that it's going to be completed 10 years later?
Correct, and the inflation associated with it.
Okay, because I wanted to make sure that there was clarity surrounding that question because there's been a lot of concern from the public about the fact that it appears as the Bayside design is actually just more expensive in the design, but that is not an apples-to-apples comparison.
Correct.
Okay.
And so just for awareness for the board members related to the whole concept of a prototype design. So shortly after I arrived, Dr. Spence tasked me with taking a deep dive into the capital improvement program and seeing... Because there was churn in and around the CIP program to see if there was anything historically that identified things where we could do better. And as part of the presentation that came back to the School Board, well, in preparation for that, I met with each School Board member individually. And in those individual conversations over that summer, one of the common themes that came back is, can't we use prototype designs to be able to save money when we do our... When we build our buildings? And the answer to that, which we gave at a School Board meeting later, was yes, and we have used prototype designs many times within Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and prototype designs are best and most effective when you're building schools rapidly. And we use prototype designs effectively, and when we're building about one school every year. There is value to prototype designs. The longer in distance they become apart, there is a likely value reduction in that. So that also wound up showing in the unsolicited PPA of, hey, in the process of doing this, you can also have a prototype school. And so, most are likely aware that Bayside is the prototype related to Kempsville and First Colonial. So it's already a good opportunity to be able to use that as a prototype for...
For the future building.
I see Melissa motioning next to me. Melissa, you have something to add?
Yes.
Ms. Ingram?
Thanks, Mr. Freeman. Yes, Ms. Franklin, so the part of the question I heard is why would Bayside High School over Princess Anne High School maybe be the prototype design? One of the reasons is Princess Anne High School has our large division-wide special education program, which will have to be integrated into the building, where Bayside High School does not. They both have academy programs, but so do a lot of our other schools. Another reason is that Princess Anne High School site is more low-lying, so it is going to have some site restrictions on it, where Bayside High School is in an area that does not have as many flood restrictions.
Okay, so Bayside, again, for the public, Bayside is a design that is more amenable to using it for other projects. And I think that you had, when I was having my discussion with you, Mr. Freeman, it was really important that you had mentioned that the prototype designs and a lot of the build had started slowing down because of the fact that the lottery funds stopped coming to the schools, which then in turn created a situation where we didn't have the funds to do or rebuild another school every single year, which had been the trend, how long ago? In the early 2000s or something?
Early to mid 2000s, yes.
Uh-huh, early to mid 2000s. So there is a historical concept here that I think that we need to really gravitate towards understanding why some of this came about before we, you know, before we just kind of make a link-it decision that this is, you know, not doable. So I just wanted to see if you could provide a little bit more clarity around that and just the importance of using that design to create a lower cost in future projects.
So, and I think what you're getting at is, so in our current modernization plan, there are several high schools, and there are all of that prototype design, so Bayside would be the first of them that are in priority. There are two elementary schools that are in there, and then those three high schools that are already prototype designs, so they would seem to be well-suited based on the landscape that they're currently occupying for being prototype designs. And that's why it was included in the proposal for the PPA.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Franklin. And I had my name in the committee, so you mentioned those prototypes, which are Bayside, Kempsville, First Colonial, all built on that same prototype back in the 70s or 60s, late 60s. So they will be the ones that will be built from the prototype from Bayside. But before we move on, I think I would like for you, you or Ms. Ingram, whoever has the figures in front of you, please tell us, again, how much the cost of each one of these buildings or these three schools in the PPA compared to what the cost would be if we did it the old way by design bid build? And then I'd like for you to show us the total amount saved by using the PPA rather than the design bid build, please.
Yes, ma'am. So the total three projects in bulk would be 714 million as compared to the 428 million, and that would be the savings. Now, we have had delays with the PPA, which will impact our comprehensive agreement because we're now over six months in delays in the PPA, unfortunately.
But why is that costing more money because we've had delays? Can you please relate that to us?
So what will happen is, it's all based on when you're bidding the actual project. And so for our offer, they will be bidding the project at the completion of the interim agreement. That's when the offer will... Or the contractor will understand what has to go into the project and will understand how much that's going to cost in order to construct. So if that were... If we had no deferrals, we would currently been well on our way through design characts. We would probably in... Be coming to the board early fall looking for approval, and we're now looking at that delay for additional six months. So that does impact the construction costs in terms of our ability to construct and finish construction earlier. We have roughly a two-year delay from the deferrals we've seen.
So is that because of the inflation of that? That would make it cost more?
Yes, ma'am. So it would be whenever you are starting the project, what the cost per square foot would be per inflation, and whenever you're completing the project as well and applying inflationary factors to the whole project. So the more we push back the timeline, the more inflation we will incur in those buildings. But again, as looking at funding for the CIP and design bid build, we're currently estimating $714 million for the three schools. When we had advertised the PPA, which the offer is working with, it was $428 million for the three schools. So that is it.
That is the difference between the two. Okay. Mr. Freeman, do you have that?
Yeah, and so for more... To be more specific to the question you asked, so all I have in front of me is the proposed CIP and then the currently approved CIP, which is from last year. So you asked for the cost differential. So you can look at the total project cost on those. So in the currently approved CIP, it was 162,650,000, and then in the current one, it's 400... I'm sorry, 247 million and some change. So the cost difference between these is when the currently approved CIP was developed, we knew that inflation was more substantial during COVID, and we knew that there was a factor that was going to be applied, but that wasn't... Again, for everything we do, we have a... Try and have a factual basis with the best information that we can apply to it. And during the course of this year, since this CIP was approved, we went out and did that research, and that's where we shared with you at a School Board meeting what that inflation was, has been observed to be, and what the projected inflation is going to be. And that's the difference between the two values that I just explained to you. And that same thing applies for Betty F. Williams, which went from about 68 million to 81 million, and for Bayside High School, that went from 197 to 385. And that difference is time value associated with inflation.
Can you also give us the timeline differences between the PPA, if we use that, or if we use the bid build, design bid build? What's the difference between getting those schools?
So, you want to cover that?
Yeah. So as we presented earlier today, it would be roughly half a year for Princess Anne High School, roughly four years for Williams-Bayside Sixth, and seven years for Bayside High School.
So seven years for Bayside would be... So seven years for Bayside would be around what year?
We would be, as Mr. Freeman said, in the mid 30s, roughly 2034, we would be hoping to bid, hoping to have secured enough funding to bid Bayside High School.
Okay, and I just have one more question. I'm sorry, one more. As you design or as you talk about the design of the buildings as we go along, whether it's design bid build or it's PPA, are we going to be talking about the square footage of these schools and working with changes and what we need to do to maybe scale down the cost? What's the the process for that?
100%. So as we briefed you a while ago, specifically related to high school, so we briefed you on the education specifications, and I see that you have that in front of you, and I'll talk to you about that. We, again, we do everything we can to have the best, most factual information to be able to develop our proposals and recommendations. And that is what has been in the CIP for previous years. The size of those buildings have not changed in the proposals. I think we all recognize that there is efficiencies that we can find in our high school designs, but there's no foundation currently for which with which to do. Now, I can tell you that we talked with Henrico about some of the things they're doing. General observation is from a from, I will tell you, Ms. Ingram and I, is we probably can save square footage related to Henrico, related to the size of our gyms. It's worthy of discussion. We could probably save some square footage related to classrooms and how those are adjusted. Feedback from we got from Henrico is they really needed to do a lot of training on master schedules. Really what they did is the classrooms were designed to be occupied all the time, which meant that there was very little excess space, and they really needed to make sure that they're master scheduling. So there's probably things could be captured there. We know that for Princess Anne, we're going to need to have a our students with disabilities taken care of, so that's going to be over and above. Just visually looking at some of the office areas, there's probably some spaces we could save. But we don't have anything that foundationally we could say at this moment in time that, yes, these are recommendations for where we could save. Now, Mr. Riggs, to your point, that can be part of the process. The benefit of doing it, for example, as it relates to the PPA specifically, is you can have not only the education, the community, and the designers represented, you also have a contractor. And that creates a good source of feedback and a natural tension of if you make this design decision, this will be the financial consequence that's associated with it. So that you can go, okay, yes, it's it's worth it, we value that, or we don't value that enough to have that extra cost, so we want to go with a more value proposition for whatever was being proposed during the the design. So to kind of summarize all that, that can and should, in my opinion, all be done during the design process.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Manning.
So one question that came to my mind today that I haven't asked yet is, in the PPA process, are we able to negotiate with the chosen contractor, Ballard, on cost? For example, could we say, could you do, could you give us 50% of the design rather than just 30% of the design for that $15.4 million? Or could we say, could you do the 30% design for $12 million? Are we able to negotiate in that in that way?
I'll take that one because at this point, you've already negotiated an agreement. And part of the PPA process requires that whatever agreement you put out there has to be made available to the public, it has to be published for 30 days, you have to have a public hearing on it. What you're suggesting is not that it can't be done, but you're going to need to go back. You would have to pull back the interim agreement that you sent over to city council for approval. You're going to have to, you could renegotiate that with the contractor at this point and come back with it. But once you renegotiate the terms, because I believe those are substantial changes to the interim agreement, once you renegotiate those terms, you then have to publish it again for the 30-day period, you have to have a public hearing, and the book, the school board would have to vote on that again, and then you could take the next step. And the next step is required by the PPA process, does require that the city council approve it. So I rough guess, and Ms. Ingram can help me with this, but I think you're talking several months to do that because you have to go back to them. Not that you can't do it, it's just what you've done already is so substantially different that the public had, the contractor has to weigh in on it, and two, the public would have to take a look at that agreement before you vote on it. So we have to repeat that process to get that done. My guess is several months for us to get that through.
Ms. Ingram, I think you were raising your hand about that.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Lynetti. I I agree with your sentiment, but I think it's also important to note during the course of the interim agreement work during the term, we can certainly negotiate the comprehensive agreement and the guaranteed maximum price. That is, that is, that would not create any additional time or anything like that. So definitely have future negotiations to occur with the offerer.
So before this was approved the first time by the school board, before we did it, did you, did staff attempt to negotiate any of these costs with the contractor?
Yes, we did, ma'am. And we had several alternates also that we did not include in the cost, and we did lower the price quite a bit in terms of negotiation for the interim agreement.
Okay. So one of my concerns, again, is the lack of competition in this. We only had two total bids, so that's a big concern for me. You know, and I know, I understand the whole time value concept. If we didn't do the PPA, could we do a design bid build on more than one school at a time?
So currently, right now, as the CIP is funded, Princess Anne High School would be fully funded as Betty F. Williams in the six-year CIP. Princess Anne High School will be funded before Betty F. Williams, so we would put out an RFQ for Princess Anne High School first, and we would have to wait for funding to catch up on Williams Bayside Sixth. And the same is true, we would have to wait for the funding to catch up on Bayside High School.
So we could do more than one design bid build in order?
We we could have Princess Anne High School be under construction as we put out for design services for Williams Bayside Sixth. That would be the scenario as the CIP is funded right now.
Okay. And then my last issue is, again, the size of the school. And I know we've talked about this a number of times, but I just want to highlight the difference. Currently, Princess Anne High School is 228,000 square feet. The proposal is 342,000 square feet. That's 120,000 square feet more. So I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around why it's so difficult to reduce the size because we're able to accommodate it now. And I understand we have special needs in Princess Anne High School, but we have special needs now, and we're we're able to accommodate those students in a much, much, much smaller school. Bayside High School, currently 200,000 square feet, proposal of 137,000 square feet more. I just, I feel like if if these schools were advertised, if you want to call it advertising, at a lower cost, we may have had more people able to bid on this PPA. I feel like the large scope of the projects has limited who can bid and who is willing to bid on these schools. So my big issue with the PPA process is the lack of competition, and I think with a lack of competition, you don't get the reduced costs associated with competition. Thank you.
Would you like me to?
Please respond to that.
So what I think I heard was competition ultimately can improve the cost and what's in the best interest of the school division for getting money's worth to the needs of the school division and being fair to taxpayers to ensure that we are not being overcharged by a contractor and the cost that we pay. So with that as a backdrop, we have, as part of the PPA package, we've got a proposal that was about 428 million for three schools. And we think it's going to be more than that based on the amount of time that has occurred because we haven't been able to get to an interim agreement. We did a little bit of math, the, you know, measuring from when this could have been originally approved and work could have gotten done. We all hear time is money related to that, and that's, it's easy to say, it's harder to, what does that really mean? We reached out to the contractor. They quoted about 30 million in additional cost because of the delay. I want to say it's somewhere between 15 and 30 million. That 15 that I use is related to when you take 428 million and you delay that by a half a year, it's going to be somewhere between 50 and 30 million dollars just delaying. That's, that's what time is money means related to that. As you look at then, how can we fund these construction related to those three buildings? You can see the difference from the projections that we have that are based on inflation that come from a professional that was hired to do this job. This wasn't our staff, it was somebody else. That based on those inflation numbers, that pushes us out to the mid 30s. So we're talking on the order of 714 million for three schools if we wait and do a design bid build, with the potential of getting somewhere, we think it's going, we're pretty confident it's going to be more than the original bid just because time has passed. But it's fair to say that it could be less than 500 million potentially. We don't know that, so don't quote me on that. But that's kind of a benefit of the PPA is when we talk about a comprehensive agreement, essentially what that is, is you wind up at the end of that time period with a quote, and there's no requirement to take the quote. At that point in time, we can say, we want to continue, we don't want to take your quote, your quote's too high, it's in the best interest of Virginia Beach City Public School and the public and our taxpayers to go to a design bid build process to be able to continue. And we come away with three designs that are designed to 30% at the cost of 15.4 million, roughly. And we get to continue on at that point without, so it's, it's low risk in that regard, and there's high potential. And Ms. Ingram used the words today, we had previously shared this has the potential of saving tens of millions of dollars. It's, it has the potential to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars category that going with the PPA could save. And there is no requirement that when we get to the end and we look at the quote, that we go with it. And it would have to be our staff that would have to look at it and say, this makes sense to recommend. In order for us to be able to recommend it, the city staff is going to have to look at it and go, yep, that would make sense to do. Then it has to go to you to say, yes, you would agree that it makes sense to go with the PPA before it ever gets to city council for them to then have to vote on it. So there's many safety wickets that are involved in the PPA process to prevent this from ultimately going in a direction that we all would not want it to go in.
Madam Chair, may I also address an issue? I want to make sure we're clear about understanding the nature of the PPA. The law involving the PPA was created to encourage members of the public or organizations in public to take on some of the risk of designing, financing, whatever is on a construction project. There are several methods in the PPA you could use. We could actually go out and solicit bids in this way, but that's not what happened in this case. What the PPA allows, one of the methods, is that you know of unsolicited bids. So contractors, designers, other individuals can assume the risk of putting together a project in a manner that makes sense to them, and maybe something that we didn't think of. Again, we did not group these three projects together. That was something that the contractor independently came in, and that's what you call an unsolicited bid. So the unsolicited bid was, in my mind, as contractor, this makes sense to me, and I put together a proposal, and I'm assuming the risk of doing this work, and I'm bringing it to you. And that's how we start this process. So this isn't a situation where we decided to group it together. This was a unique and unsolicited bid. We go through that process that allows us to do that. Now, if we wanted to go back and break these projects up and do something, that would be something else we would have to think of. But again, I want to make it clear, we did not go out with this and think of this. This was an unsolicited bid because the contractor was able to put together a process that the contractor thought of and brought it to us. It made enough sense for us to look at it, and that's how we got here. But I want to be really clear with this, we did not put it out this way. We thought it was interesting enough to bring to you, and in the process of doing this, you didn't feel like you wanted to go forward. And that's just one of the aspects of PPA. As Mr. Freeman's indicated, the contractor is assuming the risk so far. The contract, we have not paid the contractor at this stage for any of the work that they've done on there. We'll start paying the contractor if we get into an interim agreement. So all this work was done on the contractor's behalf, and that's just what the law allows for. So just want to make that clear with everybody. This was not a choice that we made, we just made the choice to investigate further.
Thank you, Ms. Lynetti. I think that was worth you repeating, and I think you raised your hand, you wanted to say something else, Mr. Freeman?
Yes, ma'am. There are two things that I want to mention. So there's been a couple of questions that I haven't circled back, and this is probably a good time to be able to talk about it. So during the workshop, I handed out a couple of sheets that were designed and intended to be able to address the concern that we've all recognized of, we think the design specs that we've previously based our square footage off of, we think that there's improvement. And how do we, how do we indicate how we want to move forward? Because again, from a large organization standpoint, being able to have a path to move forward to then make adjustments that is in the intent and guidance that we get from, from our leaders is, will help us work smoothly. So in there, under the description of scope, there's been language that was added in there for consideration that says, it is understood that the administration and school board will revisit the education specifications for this project with an intention to find efficiencies of size and scale prior to or during the design process, community input process. So it's an acknowledgement of some of the concerns that were shared, knowing that we can't fix them today or within a week, but they can be fixed over time as either part of the design process or separate process if that would be determined. One of the other things that came up that's interrelated to both of these, as we talk about the, the size of our high schools and finding efficiencies and things on those lines. Something that I learned in talking to Henrico is our preferred offer was actually involved in the construction of one of those two high schools that we've been talking about recently. And so the preferred offer for this PPA has experience with that design efficiency that we, we see there's less square footage for those high schools than Henrico. So our preferred offer has experience with being able to design schools in a way that it sounds like we value.
While you're talking about this paper that you handed out, could you please read the purpose and need, that, that two sentences?
So I'll read, so for Princess Anne High School, the purpose and need, Princess Anne High School, originally built in 1954, can no longer adequately house the required instructional programs, and the facility is in need of replacement. This project will extend the useful life of the facility by 80 to 100 years.
And I asked you to read that because I remember someone said something about sustainability and the length of our schools and lasting us a long time, and that I think that that shares that. Thank you.
Ms. Maanning, are you, are you finished?
Did she, she left? Okay, I guess she is. So Ms. Melnick?
So I just wanted to, I know Mrs. Lynetti just tried to explain that whole thing with the PPA, and I hope I can just offer this, this piece. On a typical design build project, plans are drawn up, they're put out for bid by contractors. Contractors take those plans, whether they unroll them and, and lay them out on their drafting table, and they bid these jobs, or they do it on the computer, either way, they both exist. They put in sealed bids to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. They award that contract to the lowest bidder. Then, and only then, until a contractor has been announced, that contractor puts out those plans for subcontractors to bid on all that work. That's where the competition piece comes in. In this case, Mr. Ballard decided whenever that he was going to put together a PPA, and he may have worked on this for six months, he may have worked on this for a year, he developed his own design concepts, he put together this proposal, it was an unsolicited bid. We had no idea this was coming. We look at this unsolicited bid. We look at this unsolicited bid, and as Mr. Freeman said, we, we decided it was worth a look, and we decided to go forward. But when that happened, and we agreed to that, we had to put out an RFP, correct? Okay, we put out an RFP. Now, that's a big ask for contractors.
It's an RSP?
An RFP.
Request for proposals.
Say it.
Request for proposals.
Thank you. People, not everybody knows that if they're not in the construction business.
So that's a, that's a huge ask now for a construction company to come up with their own design plans and basically put forward their own PPA is basically what happened. That's why there was no competition. There was another proposal that was submitted, it was reviewed, and your team chose the one to move forward with, and that was the Ballard Construction. So the, while I understand the, the competition piece, that's the part that really comes with design build. With the PPA, we did, we did our best, we put it out there, the turnaround time was very quick. It was like two months, right? It was like two months. And-
I'll, I'll say that it's in the ballpark, I can't confirm it.
Right. Maybe, but it was a, it was a heavy ask. One person joined forces with another construction company, they came up with their own design concepts, they put together a bid, and they submitted it. It's not our fault that other, other construction companies did not wanted to put in that effort to come up with their own proposal. Hence, the little competition. But the competition will exist at the next level if this goes through, and that will be with subcontractors. And that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. When you remember, just hit me, okay? And so I do have a list, we've got Mr. Culpepper, then Mr. Callen, then Ms. Martin, and Ms. Owens, okay? So I do have you guys in the, in the, Mr. Culpepper? Okay.
Sorry, was that me?
Okay, so Mr. Culpepper and then Ms. Martin.
I'm boggled by some numbers here. So the, the stuff in the, in the CIP, both this year and last year, you said covered design bid build, right?
There, our jobs are traditionally done in, but design bid build, yes.
Okay. And so all those numbers you quoted for 714 million dollars is based on design bid build, and that's in the current CIP, right?
Yes, it's based on if you are building the individual projects the way that they're set up, that's the ti, rough timeframe that they would occur based on projections, and so that would be the, the projected cost.
Okay.
That answer.
And then all those numbers you quoted a minute ago that come to 428 million, those are all the same numbers that are in the CIP from last year.
Right.
So is that not design bid building?
Yeah, the reason why there's a difference in the price is because we did the work related to the inflation that has been seen in recent years in projected-
Now, that's what I figured you'd say. So I think the point I'm making is that I don't think your 428 million dollars number's worth anything.
So what do you mean by that?
I mean, I think it's, I think it's last year's guess, and it's overcome by events.
So the significance of-
The numbers you quoted are exactly, they're not close, they're exactly what was in last year's CIP.
Right, yes. Talking about what's proposed for the PPA?
The PPA. So yeah, I'm looking at slide seven from today's presentation.
Right.
Those are all the numbers from last year's CIP.
Right.
So I'm just kind of curious what those numbers are worth.
So the way, so the, the process that was done to get to a recommendation to proceed to an interim agreement was based off of those numbers, and that was what was being worked through the PPA process. So again, the PPA came through when this currently approved CIP was in there, that those PPA numbers don't reflect what we projected to be inflation. So when you're trying to build individual projects that don't have a quote that comes in, and you're trying to project what the cost might be and fund them, that's what you, that's how we create the individual line items.
Yeah, that makes sense.
As it relates to the quote that we got for the PPA, that started when we had the currently approved, so last year's CIP, and that was what the contractor used to be able to work with and to be able to say, hey, we think that we can propose these three schools within a funding limitation and within a, and improve the timing on it potentially, and all the other benefits that came from it. So that's the significance of why you see the 428. Now, that being the case, you're, the point of, well, given the time that has passed, that 428 is probably not an accurate number.
Yeah, but I don't think it's 30 million on top of that. I think it's 285 million on top of that.
Well, and that's why we don't know, and that's why the benefit of going to an interim agreement is to get the quote to say, here is what it will actually cost to be able to do a PPA for three schools. And then, and only if the school staff believed that it was a good idea. And what I mean by good idea, the reason that we're even talking about this is it has cost benefit to the schools. There's a lot of benefits that went in there, but if it wasn't going to be a cost benefit of the school, I don't think we'd be talking to our elected officials about this.
Well, we believe-
Primary driver is a potential cost benefit.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, say again.
I said, we believe it has a cost benefit. But that's what I'm debating, I'm not sure that I see it.
Potential.
Yeah, potential.
Has the potential.
Has a potential for a cost benefit.
And we wouldn't know that until we get to a comprehensive agreement.
Okay, I got one, one more question for you, and I'll leave, I'll leave you be. So you get 15, 15 for, 15.4 million for the design, 30% design of three schools. And I think you said it before, that the, the design is ours when that is done. So the design and all other work products are, are the, are owned by the school without restriction when that's over?
Yes.
Okay. Or there's at least that?
Yes.
For sure. All right, thanks, Jac.
You're welcome.
Thank you for those questions, Mr. Culpepper. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Chairman Riggs. So first of all, I want to make sure that, that I've, I've worked through a little bit of these processes before through Department of General Services when I was in the Park Service and, and through university work. The Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act is 20 years old. This isn't something new, this isn't something unusual. Receiving an unsolicited bid is very common with these projects. So I'm hearing pushback from constituents, you know, there's something not right going on here. This happens all the time. Lots of buildings that the state owns are built this way, lots of university buildings are built this way. I like this because it gives us a holistic look at what this potential maximum cost will be. And then we can take a look and see what we could afford to build next year, like accelerating Betty F. Williams and then doing the high schools. So the holistic component of this is something that I think is really important. You add that on to the cost savings, and I think we have a really good idea here and a really good plan here, coupled with owning all the deliverables from the PPA. So I wanted to make sure that, that I reiterated that, this is not new, there's nothing untoward going on here. Unsolicited proposals are normal. Thank you.
Did you emphasize that point you told me about the difference?
What do you mean?
The time before you funded it.
So it's my understanding that in a PPA is you can start a design process before you have all your money in place. I mean, that's the advantage here, is that we can start looking at designs before we have a build process funded. And I think that's really critical here, that we start to see what are these schools going to look like, and what's the potential maximum cost. So, thank you.
Thank you for that knowledge, that's appreciated. Dr. Spence, have you remembered? Okay, so we're, we're going to move on to Mr. Callen.
Okay, I came across a document that I hadn't seen before, so it's the 743rd puzzle piece in my journey towards understanding all of this. And it has to do with the Public Private Education and Facilities Infrastructure Act, and it's a policy from the school board, policy number 3-71. So it was made available to me, and I underlined and highlighted, but here's what I wanted to read to you and get your impression on. The PPA permits the school board to receive and evaluate unsolicited proposals from private entities to acquire, design, construct, improve, renovate, expand, equip, maintain, or operate a qualifying project. The school board's general policy is to reserve acceptance of unsolicited proposals for cases of truly innovative ideas. Because in other cases, traditional procurement process are generally viewed as more likely to achieve full and open competition from the bidding community. So you say, oh, that's interesting. And it continues. The second piece addresses, if the review of the detailed proposals provides a preferred proposer, the superintendent may begin negotiation of a comprehensive agreement. However, if there are work items required before determination of the preferred proposer, the superintendent may negotiate an interim agreement. And it sounds like that's where we are, we're on a PPA interim agreements scenario. The work items in an interim agreement include project planning and development, design and engineering, environmental analysis and mitigation, survey, ascertainment of financing through financial and revenue analysis, establishment of a process, and timing of the negotiation of a comprehensive agreement. And then it closes with this. Because of the required approvals and its tendency to limit competition, the use of an interim agreement is disfavored. And lastly, and I will agree that this might be a shoe that doesn't fit, but it caught my eye. The school board's policy is to facilitate participation of small businesses and businesses owned by women and minorities in its procurement transactions, including procurement transactions under the PPA. Private entities making proposals to the school board pursuant to the PPA should ensure that reasonable efforts are made to facilitate participation of small businesses and businesses owned by women and minorities as part of their proposal. So I don't know what your reaction is to those items, they were noteworthy to me as I was reviewing this, and again, I'm on a learning curve. I speak that, and maybe I speak for everybody here on the board, but for me in particular, this is quite a learning curve, and these were interesting observations. I've got one more thing, but I would seek your input in light of what I was just able to read to you.
So this will likely be a bit of exchange, because there were a lot of elements there. So I'll start with the last one, the small, small women, minority and women-owned businesses. So that's, that's a, something that we strive to with all of our projects, and, and it's a constant discussion piece, and it is included as part of the PPA for the inclusion of SWAM contractors in that. So we, to the maximum extent possible, encourage, encourage is probably the wrong word, are actively engaged in ensuring that that is maximized as much as possible. So does that cover the SWAM part of it?
Sure.
And what are, what are the other key points? Because there were about five things that I was following in there. What other key points are sticking to you that we can help out with?
Well, in particular, the fact that the traditional procurement process is generally viewed as more likely to achieve full and open competition, and that's what I'm hearing from not only the things that I've read, but some of the comments that I've heard as well tonight, that a more open bidding process might have been perceived as a place whereby we'll get to maybe a different and possibly a better outcome as it relates to a proposal.
Mr. Freeman, maybe I can help out. I think when we brought the recommendation to the school board, you made a recommendation as to why you thought it met the requirements. As we mentioned before, there have been unsolicited bids in the past, and they've not been bought forward. When you brought it to the school board, there was a discussion. So if we can go back to that part, and Ms. Ingram may have that, what was your recommendation to the board as to why this met the requirements? I believe it was the innovative financing issues and the cost elements, and that's, that discussion did happen with the board.
Yes, but now you, I had a different line of, of answer prior to you going, so I'm now-
I could take, you may want to take yours first, but if I remember, we actually made a, there was a recommendation made to the school board, so.
So I'm going to go to the competition piece, because that's come up, and we had substantial discussion before we ever proceeded to that part of the step. And so there, there was a period of time, and we, we had a, a lot of discussion about the period of time, and was that enough time? And to make sure that we had an opportunity for good and open competition. And we did get two preferred, or two offers from that. So it was within school board policy, it was within law, it wasn't at the minimum requirement, there was more time. And we did not get anybody who said, hey, we would love to do this, but we just need a little bit more time. If we had gotten that, I am quite confident that we would have come back to the school board and said, hey, we have somebody else who's interested, but they need a little bit more time. We think it would be in the best interest of the school division to give that time to be able to have that additional offer. But there wasn't no additional. But related to its competition, Melissa, Ms. Ingram can correct me, but two isn't substantially different than the number of offers that we get for some of the bigger projects. And it goes into, and this may be where Ms. Linetti was going, what's, what's innovative and what's unique, and what's in the best interest of the school division and the taxpayers for this? It's the potential for cost savings is a big one.
Sure.
It has the potential to save, and at the time, we were talking about it in the order of tens of millions of dollars. And now that we've updated the calculations for, for interest, that is potentially in the hundreds of millions of dollars. That has to be addressed. It would be a, I'm looking at this many angles, and as I'm answering this question, this is the first time it's come to my mind, it would be an absolute disservice if we didn't bring this in front of our elected officials to say, hey, there's a potential that we could save tens of millions of dollars, potentially hundreds of millions of dollars. And to put that as a recommendation to pursue that, knowing that we would not be locked into that, we would just get a quote to say, here's the potential cost savings that's associated with it, and then we could choose it at that point in time. So in addition to that, it was all the items that Ms. Ingram has shared in the many briefs of the different elements of what are the benefits of the PPA, including like we talked about, then we would have a, a prototype design for our high schools moving forward and that are next in the series.
Okay, what about the required approvals and its tendency to limit competition, the use of an interim agreement is disfavored? What does that statement say to you?
So what it states is, there really better be a good reason that you're coming forward with a recommendation that is going to be the reason why to move forward with a PPA over just going a traditional design bid build. Because the way that it's worded and kind of the way that you're asking it, it almost makes it feel like, don't ever use this. And if there, if we have a policy on it, the point isn't to not ever use it, it's to make sure that you've got really good reason to come forward with a recommendation if you're going to recommend that we proceed through each step of the PPA.
Yeah, pause at least for consideration is what it said to me. The last thing I would like to address, received this document yesterday, it came from a source of information. It's got logos on it from the city of Virginia Beach and the city's school system, and it provided me with information that, again, furrowed my brow. It's got two different categories, the PPA, PPA design build with the three schools, and it gets to a bottom line price of 439,363,183. And it compares that to what they then call in the second column, the CIP budget for 2023 and 2024, and it ends with a total of 714,000,030. The cost savings that it represents is 274 million. To your point, that would be something that we would all want to look at. My question is, I had never found a place in the CIP booklet where the number 439 million came from.
May I look at it?
You sure may. You sure may.
So first time I'm seeing this one.
Okay.
Getting a little bit of conference. And what, what was just shared with me, because this is not a school board product, when I say school board, like school staff, is this is potentially from the contractor. And is this potentially proprietary?
We cannot divulge any proprietary.
So this is potentially from the proprietary piece of information that we would not be able to share publicly. So... So can, so I guess with that as a backdrop, can I, can I be of any further assistance for the information that's without divulging anything?
I was, I was hoping I'd find the lower of those two numbers in a CIP page that I may have overlooked. But that was the purpose for my question, just to try to find out, from your perspective, do you have any idea where that would have come from? And maybe I overlooked it.
I need to, I do need to step in. If this is the proprietary protected information, we've got a problem. I need to make sure we're not violating any of our rules on that. I don't know where that document came from, but we, we aren't authorized to release that proprietary information. I don't know if that, I haven't seen the document, but if that is protected proprietary information, we need to be very careful about how we proceed. So I don't know who got a hold of that, if that's true, and why it's out in the public if that happened, because that information should be protected, but I'm not, I'm not sure where it came from.
So with that being the case, I think I can answer your question without referencing that document. So the 700, the proposed CIP, those three projects are on the order of 17, 714 million. That's in the proposed CIP that's in front of you now.
Page 27.
Got it. And the currently approved, you can call it last year's CIP, those three projects add up to approximately 428 million. So I, I can share that. So that is the...
And you say that's last year's CIP?
Correct, which is the currently approved one.
Okay.
And it was also 428 was the number that was used as the, when we were talking about with Mr. Culpepper, how that 428 related to the PPA. That was kind of a boundary and a planning factor that was used because that was what was programmed into the CIP at that point in time. So that was a, a goal to be able to work within what might be available. Now, that all being said, given where we have gone inflation-wise, we are confident that that number is going to be higher than the 428 that was originally discussed, because it's now much longer than had been anticipated. We just don't know how much higher. And that's the importance of getting the quote. We, we don't, the indications that we're getting is it's going to be much closer to the lower end than the higher end. But we need to see the quote in order to be able to share that. I can't say that with a, the only way to know is to go through the, go to an interim agreement, get a comprehensive agreement, and see what that quote says. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Owens.
And mine is brief. I, I am in support of entering the PPEA interim agreement.
I hear you need to speak up into your mic, hon.
Thank you. I'll be brief, because I, I already am in support of entering the PPEA interim agreement. My comments are more geared to the questions about the square footage of the new builds. And one of the things that I've been looking at are the square foot footage of our last three builds, which were Kellum High School, Princess Anne Middle School, and ODS. When I look at them and respectively, it's 336,410 square feet for Kellum, Princess Anne is 257,784 square feet, and ODS 225,000 square feet. And looking at the student population for each of them and dividing out what that is equaling per, per student, square foot wise, what's being asked for for Bayside is significantly less square feet per student. And it seems like there's a lot of concern about even allotting that for, for Bayside. And so I put out to the board that there are some optics concerns when our school board was able to approve, not on a close vote, but approve easily to allow the square footage for Kellum, Pam's, and ODS. And then when we are looking at schools with different populations, that it seems like a much harder push for a much smaller square foot per student population. And so I, I encourage you to pull the BUC report and take a look at what has been approved for other populations in our city, square foot per student, and what we are trying to deny for, for these next builds. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
Okay. So I have a few questions. At the current rate of funding, if you were to take your best guess around where these estimates are supposed to be, or where you think they may fall for these proposals, can you tell me if the school board has the funding to complete the projects at the dates that this is proposing without going back to city council and asking for more funds?
So I think the question is, is related to the PPA, is there funding programmed into the CIP to be able to cover the entire cost of the PPA?
Yes, that is what I'm asking.
That is based on the fact that there's a six-year funding line. That is, would not be covered without actually doing the detailed work that would be part of the comprehensive agreement. So part of the work that would be done would be, what would be the funding requirement? And over, and the timing over the years, because there's going to be thresholds that are very important to all of us in the city, and it's something that city council pays very much attention to related to debt metrics. I'll just put it in those general terms. And they have recently hired a contractor, Davenport, who's helped, who's helping them work through what do their debt metrics look like moving forward to best set them up? City's got a very good rating, and they are appropriately protective of that rating. So the work that would need to be done would be, all right, well, how would the funding look? And how would the debt service, the debt metrics look as it related to how quickly the build was going to go for those three schools? And that would all need to be worked out as part of the comprehensive agreement. And those would be key areas of, so we, we mentioned that how important it is, cost savings is related to these. If we weren't able to do it within the debt metrics, and that's where I said, you know, in order for it to come to the school board as a, as a recommendation, it has to be able to make it through staff. And we are very, very tightly tied in with the city. We've met, I'm going to say about six times since the, over the course of the fall with their staff. One of those times actually included Davenport in the meeting, so that's the people that are doing the debt calculations for the city. And I personally envision them being involved if we were to get to that, to make sure that they were putting a good eye on what it, what the funding and the debt would look like, to be able to make the best possible recommendation if it even got to that point. But that would be a, kind of a go-no-go item, whether this could be done within those debt requirements.
Okay. And Mr. Callen mentioned our bylaws and how it requires for it to be innovative. Is the innovation really just talking about speeding up the timeline? Or what other, can you speak to any other types of innovation that were included? Or is that proprietary?
Well, there's the financial piece. So package in the three and the substantial cost piece, and that's a, a significant factor related to it. And then it's really goes to all the benefits that Ms. Ingram has highlighted in the, in the piece. And I, I guess it goes into, because I, I think what's coming across in some of these questions when it comes up is, what does innovative mean? So we're, so innovative is, are, can you do things better, more efficiently, with less dollars as part of this process? Yes. Do I, do I believe that meets the intent of the word innovative in there? Yes. We come away with a, a high school that is potentially a prototype for the high schools that follow that? Is that innovative? I think packaged in that way, yes.
Okay. And I know that part of the public-private piece of that sometimes is that there is finances tied in that you had talked about. Is the contractor, sorry, is that the right phrase?
Preferred offer contractor, that's fine.
Preferred contractor. Is there any financial risks that the preferred contractor has taken on that is illustrated to administration?
So right now, the, the preferred offer has received zero. So all of the work that has been done is completely at the contractor's risk. And we're two years into this, so when you talk in past tense, the contractor's already taken on a substantial amount of risk. As we move into the, if there were to be a comprehensive agreement, and if we were to go into a build, you're talking about a contractor then being locked into a guaranteed maximum price over a construction process that is going to span seven to eight years, which includes three buildings, two high schools, of which is going to include needing to get students into this school. So seven to eight years, that offers a fair amount of risk of what occurs during that period of time. So I would say that there's some risk to the contractor here.
Okay. So you've talked about a lot of the benefits of the PPEA, and, you know, I know that's because you think it's a good idea, probably. And you've said that it's probably low risk, and it's probably good for us. Can you illustrate any of the risks that we may face from accepting the PPEA?
You mean going into the interim agreement?
Yes, the interim agreement, yes.
So the, the, one of the ones that came out first and was most substantial early on in the conversation was creating a false expectation for the community that they're going to get a school earlier than what we would be able to give them. So certainly from city council standpoint, they were concerned that, I think they were concerned for all three schools originally until they got more information, and then their concern was, all right, the Bayside community, if we, we will go out, if we get into this interim agreement, and we want feedback from the community. So they would be in a position where they're hearing that, hey, we're looking to do work on your school. And the city council was concerned that, well, that's going to create a false perception that if we get to the point where we don't believe that the comprehensive agreement is in the best interest of schools and the city and our taxpayers, and we say, no, we're going to go with the design bid build, that now the expectation went from, hey, you're just pushed back when my kids are going to be in this new school by seven to eight years. So that risk is acknowledged. We believe very strongly that during the, the process, we can include that communication upfront, that, hey, this is something that we're looking at that may be a benefit. There's no guarantee that it can occur here. And we think that we can set that condition so that that is not a significant concern. So that was one of the concerns that came from them. The, the other concerns that we've talked about are, there's a, there's a mitigation associated with each of them. So for example, hey, we think that our, there's too much square footage in our buildings. Well, that can be fixed during the PPA process as well as during a design bid build process. It's the same process to be able to fix that. And quite honestly, what, as I mentioned, I learned recently that our preferred offer actually has built a smaller high school in Henrico. So with, that apparently could be using space more efficiently. So we have that added expertise to go into the process. So the concern related to the size of the buildings, that really is shared for both of them. So all of the concerns that have come up, there's really an effective mitigation to, to them, including the, the most substantial one that we're hearing related to the misperception of time.
And I do share the, the misperception of time also. And so I'm just going to make a statement, and then I'll be done. So first off, none of these schools are being built tomorrow. I would love to see some rebuilds and improvements. So this isn't really me opposing rebuilds, it's just that I have a lot of questions about the process. Anybody that's going to be going to Bayside High School when it's rebuilt and walking the halls, that's there right now, is not going to have the chance to walk the halls. Same thing with Princess Anne High School. When we build it, the students that are there right now will not have the opportunity to walk the halls. Same thing for Betty F. Williams, Bayside Sixth rebuild. So I just wanted to point that out. I am concerned about the potential for it to come back to us and say that we need to try to ask city council for more money to fund this. I would, I would not support that. So I wanted to say that the inflation estimates utilized in the CIP to justify the PPA EA interim agreement appear to contradict studies and evidence showing inflation is projected to decrease. In fact, even the White House, with President Joe Biden, stated on January 12th, 2023, a couple of figures, and I'll quote, inflation is down 9.1% from last summer. And I'll quote again, inflation is at its lowest level since October 2021. I'm going to quote again, looking at just the last three months, we've seen inflation fall 1.8% on an annualized basis. It's down 11% in the first three months of the last year. We have a significant amount of money in the CIP earmarked for these projects right now. It appears to me that continuing with this PPEA interim agreement is actually slowing us down. There's no guarantee that city council will support it. So we're already eight months into it. When they come to a vote, we will be more than nine months into it. I feel like it's important for me to note, I was surprised and a little uncomfortable when the contractor directly emailed me this afternoon leading up to this vote, requesting a phone call. For transparency purposes, I did not engage in this conversation. The company's buildings are beautiful. I don't take an issue with the product that the contractor is providing. But my job is to do what I really feel like is best for the division. And I'm not really, I'm, I'm fine with getting the answers, but I think when we're coming up to a big vote, that kind of raised the red flag for me. So I don't know that I think there's enough compelling information regarding the proof of cost savings and the trajectory of inflation, as we are discussing, for me to support it. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am. So just if I may, just for clarification, so the PPEA numbers do not include the inflation rates that were recently calculated. So that's why the number is on the order of 428 that's in the PPEA. And the inflation numbers that were developed by the, contracted out that we did, that were projected, that's why the numbers are substantially increased in the currently proposed CIP. So PPA does not reflect those inflation numbers. Related to, and appreciate the comments from the, from the president, there may be some applicability concerns with what he was trying to share as it relates to school construction in the state of Virginia. Because as you guys have seen on the slides where we showed you, there was a, the straight-line version of inflation that has occurred since like the early 2000s, that was calculated at about the 5% range. And then we had the curved line that was an indication visually of the steeper inflation that occurred from the... line that was an indication visually of the steeper inflation that occurred from the, you know, mid-teens till now, and then we got the updated expert opinion on what inflation looks like moving forward. And it's, so the lowest amount of inflation for those school, for school construction in Virginia was on the order of 4.8%, but the more recent ones, we share what those numbers are. So, the projected numbers moving forward, they're projections, they're what they are. Again, if we had done these projections back in 2019, they wouldn't have included what actually occurred during the pandemic. So, these will need to be updated periodically. One of the significant pieces to remember about the reason why we're sharing the inflation is inflation continues to go up, cost per square foot continues to go up. What is not going up is the funding. The funding has been 60 million in the late, in about the 2008, 9, 10 timeframe, and there was a dip that occurred, and it's still 60 million. So, when you have inflation going up, and you don't have, and you're not increasing the amount of money that's going in to pay for it, you continue to lose value in what you're able to spend, the value of the dollar continues to go down, and it's going to be less and less over time for what we're able to do related to CIP projects. So, that's the significant part about that.
And I just want to add one thing. When Ms. Manning and Ms. Wilson had the joint CIP meeting over at the city, when Mr. Freeman shared those three charts, the city manager for Virginia Beach, Patrick Duhaney, and his co-manager, both said, yes, that's exactly what we're seeing in terms of inflation. That is, the same things we're trying to deal with with future buildings. So, those numbers are not our numbers, those are numbers that were supported by the city council as well.
Okay. Finished? All right, Ms. Anderson.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, how many contractors typically bid on a large school contract?
So, I don't have the exact numbers right now. I can definitely follow up with you, but we, we don't normally have many more than two. Specifically, in these last several years where there's been labor shortages, we have, even our design bid builds for our smaller renovations, we have had a very limited number of bidders.
Okay. So, it's not unusual to just have two?
No, ma'am, it's not.
Okay. Even though I, I could see where, you know, if you, if you were in a real big situation where, where you could have three or four, you could choose, you know, more, but if it's typical recently that we just have about two, that's, that's not unusual.
Sorry.
Because of the, of the, of the cost and the inflation and how it's going up, I'm not going to ask you to answer this, this is like a rhetorical question. Do we just put our heads in the sand and ignore and not build buildings? Is that what we do? Think about it. It's just a rhetorical question for the board. We can ignore it, we can pretend that inflation's going to go, completely go away. I don't think it'll ever completely go away, but it might drop some. But I, I don't believe we should put our heads in the sand and hope that it's going to drop to the point that we're going to be back to where we were a year ago even. We, we, we approved this resolution back in August, sent it to city council, and here we are now. By the time they approve it, if they approve it, it'll be nine months. And time is money. You said that earlier. Time is money. We need to be thinking about this, and I, I just feel like if we don't approve this and send it back to city council, or we don't send it back to city council, we already know that the bid build is going to be significantly more. And we can put our heads in the sand, as I said before, but, and pretend like this is going to, you know, oh, this problem's going to go away. It's not going to go away, and the cost is not going to get less than what we're looking at now. So, I think we should approve this tonight, send it back to city council and ask them to approve it, and let's move forward in some way. At least we'll have a better idea, from my understanding, we'll have a better idea of what things are going to cost once we can start moving forward with this PPEA. Instead of in this, we've been, you know, just stagnated for nine, almost, by the time they get to it in April, it'll almost be nine months. So, I think we should approve it, and that's all I have to say.
So, are you asking to bring it to a vote now? Is that what you're asking?
I'd love for us to vote now, but I'm not going to say, I'm not going to ask for two-thirds to end debate. No, I'm not doing that.
Okay. Mr. Culpepper.
Thanks y'all for all the, all the input, I appreciate it. I don't have any more questions, but I did just kind of want to wrap up a little bit. I mean, this is what I think about all this. I mean, the bottom line for me, I think, is that I have no faith in the, in the cost savings. And I, I think we're going to see the inflation hit, because when, when push comes to shove for anybody who does this project, it costs what it costs to, to buy stuff and hire people. So, I'm not sure there's going to be any cost savings. Having said that, $15 million for a 30% design, and if you looked at all those, those schools, go figure, it's 45 million for design of all three schools. So, I mean, if, if we do go through this, and it's a, and it's a bust, and we decide to go a different path, it's not like we wasted 15 million. I don't think there'd be a one-to-one savings with the next step in designing each of those schools to completion, but I don't think that money's all lost. So, I mean, I told you this yesterday in the hallway, Jack, still feels like a coin toss to me.
Ms. Manning.
Yeah, just one comment. You know, as homeowners, you know, I know a lot of people have not done a lot of projects. We want to do a project on our house. We got quotes, and we realized it, it was out of our reach with the cost of materials, inflation, labor shortages. We've put it off, hoping that in a couple of years, hopefully, costs will come down and it'll be more affordable. So, yeah, we have put our head in the sand and, and said, we can't do this because we need to manage our household budget. And so, I'm looking, if, if I'm looking at not being able to do something for my own personal home, I don't want to spend the taxpayer dollars and make a poor decision to spend when I won't even spend that money myself. So, thanks.
Yes, you may. Now, I do want to remind you guys, we have a closed session with four major discussions.
Okay. I've just got a quick question for Jack again, if I may. This may be redundant, and if so, I apologize, but the message being projected is that if we take the offer that's available now, the cost for building the three schools projected, realizing it's not written in sand or stone, but the projected cost is 439 million and some change. However, the CIP budget, if we were to pursue that, which sounds like it's more of a design bid build, is projected to cost 714 million. Are those, is that a correct way to frame the option that presents itself?
Small adjustments, so the 714 for the design bid build and what's in the CIP, yes. I believe the number's actually 428 that is in the PPE.
Well, according to this secret code that I got, it's 439 million.
I'm quoting you what we believe was in the CIP documents.
Okay.
Now, that being said, we do believe that there's an inflation factor that will cause that to go higher if we were to see what a, a final quote was, that's the comprehensive agreement, the final quote. We think it's going to be more than 428. We just can't say how much more than 420 it would be. The indications we're getting, it's going to be closer to that number than it is to the 714, but I, we, we would have to see the quote to be able to say with any degree of competence.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Spencer's remembered what he wants to say.
Well, it's different, but just a quick final comment. So, just to make perfectly clear, in a moment, you all will need to either, I mean, this was discussion, there's, there's not a motion on the floor to, I don't think, Kami, am I right, to approve moving forward with the interim agreement and sending that back to council? I don't think there's any motion on the floor, right? Just for discussion, right? So, you'll need to come, come with that. And so, as you, as you consider that, I'll just say one more time. So, this isn't like a, you know, the administration has some, some sort of nefarious intent, which it seems to be the, the conversation out there. Our job was to take an unsolicited bid, evaluate it, determine if we should bring it forward to the school board, because we felt it had value and that it would be good for the division and good for the citizens of Virginia Beach. We did that. We brought that forward last August. The school board agreed with us, asked that we be able to enter into an interim agreement. That interim agreement gives you the opportunity through a design process to come up with a final cost for three projects. The final cost of those three projects will save the taxpayers' money. I appreciate your cynicism, it will save the taxpayers' money. The reason for that is because we will get the Bayside High School project completed in our estimation instead of 2039 by the early 2030s. That alone, that gap of seven years, is going to save you money on that project unless there is zero inflation between 2031 and 2039, and if anybody thinks that's going to happen with construction costs, you're, you're not, you're not following historical reality. So, there will be inflation over those seven years. That's where the savings is, right there. And in the, the shorter timeframe for the Betty F. project as well, there'll be some savings. So, there will be savings, period. That's why we brought it forward, because we knew we could get this done faster. We're not committing the board, we're not asking the board to commit to anything other than find out what that cost is, so that we can tell you with clarity, here's what your savings is going to be, and tell you with clarity, here's how we can fund this and stay within the city's debt service. We can't do any of that until we get an interim agreement completed and get a final cost. There's just no way to do that. And so, we're telling you, we're, we're saying, we'd like to do that because we think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers and the division to get these buildings built faster, more efficiently, and it's at a cost savings. We're also fine if at the end of all of this, the board says, no, we're not comfortable with that, we will tomorrow begin the design bid build process for Princess Anne High School. At this point, frankly, we just need an answer. This has been kicked down the road too long for us. We need an answer, and I mean, just, when I say too long for us, because we, we're prepared to enter into the design build bid process for Princess Anne, and that's in our long-range facilities plan to, to get going. And so, we really just need an answer. We can, we can tomorrow begin that process and get that building under construction. Just know, what that means is, we are going to project for you, we do not get Bayside High School built until 2039, and the CIP is what the CIP is, and we're comfortable with that, that's why we put it forward for you. So, that's kind of my last pitch on this, but we really just need an answer. So, we'd like the board to, somebody to make a motion to approve this thing, and then you all can up, up it or down it. That would be my, my request at this point.
Madam Chair, if I may, I make a motion that the school board vote on the PPEA interim agreement, so the school board can move forward with the next step.
Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Culpepper.
Can we clarify that motion, because I gave you two draft resolutions.
Please clarify it.
I think what you're doing is either you're saying, yes, city council, what we sent you, we don't want any changes, just go forward with, we confirm that we still agree with that, that's one of the resolutions, or two, no, city council, we do not want you to consider the interim agreement, and what, the way I wrote, and I don't have it in front of me at the moment, was that you direct the superintendent to come back with you recommendations. If you are not going forward, you do not want to go forward with an interim agreement, you're going to say, city council, we no longer want to go forward with that, and then you can tell the superintendent to come back with other recommendations. So, I think those are your choices. You can do something else if you want after that, but I think you need to pick one of those. You may want to look at the draft resolutions that were with the agenda cover sheet, so that you know, I think everybody needs to know exactly what you're approving.
I think the draft that we were given today, when we were discussing it during our workshop, or either our, our mini-retreat, which, which one did you give it to us? You gave us that draft.
So.
The workshop. So, I think that's the one that we decided that we were talking about today, all day long. That's the one we're talking about, that we would like to go ahead, and we do need a second before we do this. You second, Ms. Anderson.
Mr. Culpepper already did.
That's right. I'm sorry, Mr. Culpepper, we did, we did get you, I'm sorry. But I think that, I know that was, that's what we're talking about, that's what we've been talking about all afternoon.
The question you asked me is to vote on the PPA. That doesn't make any sense.
No, I said the PPA interim agreement.
Yeah, what are, what are you voting on? You're not.
Send it to council, to send it back to council.
Yeah, so, I think you need to clarify, are we voting that we confirm that what we sent to city coun, what you sent to city council, you still agree with that, and you want them to consider it as you sent it to them in August? Or are you saying, we no longer want it? It sounds to me like Mrs. Melnick said, I, I make a motion that we confirm that we still want the city council to consider the interim agreement as we sent over in August. Does that sound right?
That is the way. That's correct. And, and you understand that that was what you seconded?
Sort of understood that seconded.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Culpepper. Does everybody understand that now? Okay. So, say it one more time, so we know we've got it.
I believe, and Mrs. Melnick, correct me if I'm not saying what you wanted, that the motion on the floor is that the school board vote to confirm that they want city council to proceed with a decision on the interim agreement, the request to approve the interim agreement as it was sent to them in August of 2022. Yes.
Okay. So, no more discussion, let's move on to the vote. All that are in favor of that motion that Ms. Melnick made and Mr. Culpepper seconded, please raise your hand.
I have to abstain. I'll get that in a minute.
We have seven ayes.
Okay. Are there any, do we want to call it abstentions, or do we want to call it recu, recourse? Oh, any nays, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're not calling for.
I'm sorry. Any nays.
And we have two nays.
And for the record, Madam Chair, I am abstaining from this vote because my husband and I own Premier Millwork and Lumber Company, and we are subcontractor in the construction industry, and for that reason, I do not vote on general contractor projects.
Okay, thank you. So, the vote is?
We have seven ayes, two nays, and one abstention.
Okay. So, the decision has been made tonight that we will send the, our interim agreement back to city council.
It's not going back, you're just confirming that you want them to.
Confirming that we want them to, to look at that, okay?
The request was for them to approve it with the PPA process, so that what's before them, you have not changed it, you're asking them to continue with that.
Right, and they have to look at it and decide what they, if they're going to support it. Thank you. So, we're now to 16. Committee organization or board reports. Do any school board members have anything to report? As a reminder, this is the time for short reports, and school board members may file full reports with the clerk to be distributed to other school board members. Ms. Anderson.
This is a quick reminder that the youth ambassador that is chosen through Sister Cities will be chosen on March 24, and the program will take place at the Philippine Cultural Center in the Kempfville area. If you're interested in getting tickets, you need to contact Ms. Riggs, because I know she has tickets, and, you know, I don't know what time it takes place that night, I just know it's March 24.
I think it's at 6:00.
6:00.
It's Philippine Cultural Center, 6:00.
6:00. Thank you.
Okay, is that it?
Just a reminder, you have governance tomorrow, because you have new people on governance.
Yeah, I said that.
Tomorrow, and then, Mrs. Manning, you want to confirm, because I think we, we changed the time of the PRC meeting? Is it, is it still my, still the same date? I know we were kicking around.
PRC is 1:00 on Thursday.
1:00 on the night.
Oh, I'm sorry, PRC, I'm sorry, Mrs. Manning.
PRC.
We have audit.
Correct. You have audit this week, PRC.
It's 11:00 on March 9.
11:00 on March 9.
Okay. So, now, we are going to return back to the Einstein Lab to finish, because it is on our agenda. our agenda, and we have to finish our workshop with that, even though we had a lot of discussion on the, the interim, PPE interim, that we still have that last item, which is the budget and the CIP, if there's any questions. And then, we go into closed session, and we'll read into closed session when we get over there. So, I'm going to give us about five to eight minutes to get over there, guys, okay? And, do I need to bang that gavel so we can move on? Okay. This part of the meeting is over at 11:13.